So if everybody could join me by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. I'm gonna start here, the flag is on the screen, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this bill with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the October tenth City of Dexter City Council meeting. Pam, when you're ready, please do the roll call noting that Paul Cousins and Sanam both have two deaths.
Fisher, yes, Griffin, here, Hammer, here, Michelle.
Yes.
Keo.
Yes.
Heidi, here.
Okay, we have five, so we have four. I can see on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Is there somebody that like to move the minutes? Motion to approve by Fisher, thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Griffin, thank you, Jane. Any comments on this?
I just think that our Secretary did a really nice job. A lot went on, and I thought you didn't make sure we recorded. Thank you.
Yeah, I think to end that same, well, I'm gonna say my final comment is gonna be that I intended my request to mean only that my comments were kind of private, and it looks like you did all of them, which I think is totally fine.
I had actually put in a request, and some of you have did after that.
Okay.
We need to put in that request after. So.
Also attending Attorney, City Attorney Scott Mendel was in the peanut scale, which he be documenting is also attending. He should.
Good catch. Any comments on the meeting? Okay, Pam, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes with the addition of the City Attorney under.
Yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Fisher, yes, Griffin, yes, Keo.
Yes. Thank you. We have no prearranged participation, so we're down to item E, approval of the agenda, and we need to. Whoever makes the motion to approve it, we need to make a small change to item M seven. That was requested to be a consideration item. And inadvertently got pitched as a discussion item, so somebody could please.
I'll move it for the agenda, changing M seven to a consideration item.
Okay, move by Griffin, thank you, Jane.
Second.
Second by one, thank you. Okay, any discussion on the agenda? Too long, too short, all good? Okay, Pam, please call the vote to approve the agenda with that one.
Hammer, yes, Fisher, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Keo.
Yes. Motion carries. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? There are none at this time. If you should discover that, just speak up, please. Item G, public hearings. We have none this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two items on the agenda where anyone in the audience can speak on any topic. If you would like to speak this evening, please step forward, welcome chat. Please state your full name and address for the minutes.
Sure. I live at seven five five zero Fourth Street, two hoes of down. Not that that makes any difference. I'm here to talk about the discussion that you had about the. Bell Road Bridge last, last week. While the planning commission brought me up to speed, and so I became a little more familiar with it. And that's what I want to speak to tonight. And I'll give you a little background. And if you know this, maybe, maybe you don't, maybe you know me, maybe some of you don't. I'm a licensed landscape architect and have been for fifty years. I worked for the city of Ann Arbor for eighteen years. I had my own firm for twenty years. I taught at the U of M as an edge home for twenty-some years. So Parks is a lot of my background, and Bridges dozens of them over the course of my career have been part of what I've dealt with. And so this one caught my attention. I think the Bell Road Bridge is wonderful. I think a place should be found for it, but I'm concerned about the location that. It has been chosen, not the location itself or a crossing, because that's perfect, but the, but putting the Bell Road Bridge to me at that location. It's a little out of place. It's a big bridge. It's a road bridge. You'll see it forever, and it'll be, it seems to me it'll be a little. Out of place setting out there in the middle of the, of the park where you want something that's less. Visible, something lower in the presence, so that when you look over there, it doesn't, it doesn't grab your attention as much as the Bell Road Bridge would do. The. The cost is an issue too. The cost that was presented. Was a little, was tilted towards the Bell Road Bridge, because the Bell Road Bridge is X feet long. If you put in a new bridge that's X feet long, the same X feet long, then the cost is pretty darn close, by my quick calculation, the same, maybe even less. To install a, a new bridge. And lastly, maintenance, maintenance, this is a road bridge, an old, an old one. Maintenance is gonna be an issue over time. Now, you know, the pedestrian bridges take some maintenance, but it's, they're new. They won't require quite as much maintenance. Is that over time? The, that old bridge is definitely going to need, or even if it's fixed up totally before it's put in there, it's an old bridge. So down the road, I think you're gonna be strapping yourselves with a, with maintenance costs that you perhaps didn't just pay. So that's all I want to do. I want to weigh in on this question, and I've done all of the. I've built a lot of bridges, all the bridges at Gal Park, things like that. I don't actually do know a bit about it. So anyway, that's what I wanted to put my thoughts on, on that decision.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for coming this evening. Good evening. Good evening. Dancheloff, seventy-nine thirty-nine Fourth Street, Dexter, Michigan. I was reading today the, the city council packet, and I came upon pages sixty-seven to seventy-one. With the Second Street project, there's a little bit in there from Justin, there's a little bit in there from OHM. I thought it was my responsibility to give you a little background on that since I was a superintendent, and I quit, or retired. When I left life first, after three meetings with Chris from OHM, we were sixteen thousand dollars on the boat. So how, I guess you can read through this document that OHM provided for us, that kind of gives you an overview on all the things that were missed. That, that gets us towards that ninety-seven thousand. I was very upset when I read this document. We've been working with OHM for twenty-five, thirty years, and I expect a lot more than at the last minute that we find out we're ninety-seven thousand dollars on the budget. Eighteen thousand of that I can understand, because we were making tweaks to the stormwater, different things that I know that the city residents are gonna have to have to be happy with this project. Along with the forty-two thousand that we spent at the beginning of it, so we didn't have three or four foot to do. Now, I also understand that we were gonna pay for this anyway, okay? I mean, if they had known the city standards, we'd have paid that extra twenty thousand, but they didn't know, and that's how we ended up with the three fifty pipe instead of the duct one hundred and fifty-four, correct? That's how that happened. The quantities were wrong, so the bid specs went up. Wrong. And I think if you read through the document, that's what the gist that I got, and I get that we would have paid for that if they had called that originally, but I expect a lot more from a company that's worked with us for a long, long time. And then also, we had stuff in there about pothole and utilities. We've been doing that for years. What that means is we go in when we know that we have a conflict with something, OHM knows that. We do that on all our projects, on our answer, our sewer lines. We go in and T feed them, and then we get the, how many feet are out of the ground so the contractor doesn't fall through. So that should be expected to be done. It shouldn't be anything that we need to do. It should have been that way the whole time. So thinking that our staff need to do anything different, this is all on OHM's part, as I'm concerned. We did add stuff to this project, but we always do, because we want to make it a good project, so we don't have residents coming back to us wanting their storm drains filled in like we've been doing the last two or three years after a project is completed. Thank you. Thank you for your guidance, Pam. Yes, sir.
Is it okay to talk about the, the employee sidewalk plan?
Sure, absolutely.
Does everyone have like that nice site and app that you have with the sidewalks and Dan?
We do, from the fact, yes. Why don't you tell us your name and address first, just so we know who you are.
Yes, I'm Donald Wesley. I'm the construction project manager for Avalon, I'm from Michigan.
Best of Michigan.
Nice to meet you too. First, I want to say thanks to Justin for meeting our team on site a couple months ago to kind of walk in the footsteps of the students and how they would get to school, or safe ways to get to school. Hilltop View is the brand new development right across, across the street from the elementary school. We're strongly advocating the crosswalk so the kids can safely get to school. So there are a couple of observations we made when we did that site visit. The students have the option of going east to a crosswalk or Dexterian Road Road. That crosswalk is about half a mile, and you go past the school to get to that crosswalk. And then you cross the street, and then you backtrack about a quarter mile to really get to the elementary school. And then the second option they have is they could go west towards Walkabout Creek to get to that crosswalk. And then they cross the street, but they backtrack about a half a mile to really get to the elementary school, and that's their destination. That's one observation we made. Now, if you think about a student that's standing in front of Dan Hoy, they're standing there and they're looking at the school right across the street and saying, oh, that's so convenient, it's right there, it is not a crosswalk. So the biggest concern really is that, let's say, a student is running late, or it's really cold outside, or it's raining, or it's snowing. It's so tempting to say, hey, I'm gonna dart across the street to get to this school. So that's the reality of it. Just because it's right in front of their development. It's very tempting to just dart across the street, yet instead, you've gotta travel a half mile that way, and then cross and come back a quarter mile. So that's why we're kind of advocating the crosswalk. The other thing we wanted to mention with that, right now, Avalon does not have the financial resources to pay for that crosswalk, so we wanted you to take that into consideration when thinking about. The sidewalk and crosswalk options. And then I'd just like to say, thanks for giving your time, me your time, to, to talk about this, and I hope you take this crosswalk. In serious consideration.
Thank you for speaking tonight. When we get to the item, if we have any questions, we may call you back up.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice to meet you today. For Donna. Yes, please, Sarah.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Schuler, and I'm with Faith in Action. I live in Dexter Township, but I work sometimes here at our site. Donald was just talking about.
Just give, give us an address to associate with your name, please.
Nine eight six six, here on Freak Drive in Dexter. Um. I just wanted to reiterate what Donald said from, from Avalon, that we really are concerned about the safety of, of the students or the families that we serve at Hilltop. I've been taking my daughter to school here. She's in high school now, and I know what that traffic is like every morning as you're going and as you're leaving, and I know you're in a hurry, and that you're gonna. Continually shoot for the easiest option, and so if I'm going to anchor or beacon, I'm just gonna wanna dart across the street. So I am just hoping that this council will consider putting in that crosswalk rather than expecting students walking down or sort of walk in the other direction. I know all these kids were excited to start a new school year, and we really don't wanna have some tragedy happen, because we need to have other way for them. So I just wanna let you know if you have any questions from Faith in Action's perspective, you certainly can reach out to me, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Pelto. I live at thirty thirty Enverness, and I'd like to talk about the discussion last week. From Bogdana and Jamie, I saw people accuse Jamie of lying and having ulterior motives. Last week, and if you wanna accuse somebody of lying, it's me. I'm the guy that started this. I live across the street from Donna, and we've always been friends. I hope we're friends after this. Jamie's not my friend. She's a local politician. I met at the library and on the sidewalk a couple of times with her kids, but I can't let her take the heat for that. I mentioned that I thought Donna hadn't lived there in a long time, and. I mowed Donna's lawn over the years. I've shoulders, snow, vacuumed her leaves, taken her governor's care every week. I consider her one of my very best neighbors. And I know she has health issues, and we discussed many times to take care of her mom. And what could be better than that? But the truth is the truth, the hard, uncomfortable things you still gotta talk about. And, you know, Jamie. You know, took the heat, and, and she wasn't lying. I'm the unnamed person who was asking these questions, and I just wanted to know the clarification. It was nothing against Donna, whereas if there was somebody else in that position, I used to teach ethics to new employees, business ethics, personal ethics, situation ethics. And there aren't any of those. They're just plain ethics. Now, if Donna hasn't been there. Do I think for one minute that diminished her service of dedication or love for the city? No, I don't. In fact, both of those things endear me more to her over there, but I wanted to clear the air that I'm the guy, if you wanna bully somebody, yell at somebody, yell at me. And I don't really know anybody's political parties. I imagine you're the mayor, sir. I don't really know, is it?
I am the mayor.
Okay.
And you know, the best part is we're nonpartisan here, Dexter.
That's good, and I like that. And, and you know, in closing, I want to say that I want to, even though I might disagree with some of you, I appreciate your time and dedication. You can always appreciate hard work. And service from anybody, especially when we come up here and hear all kinds of stuff. And I want to thank Almighty God. I live in a country where I can address the government without fear of being ass who'd retaliate or murdered. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments and for introducing yourself, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Hold on, I just heard the idea something specific.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. No, no.
My name is Denise Smith. I'm a director of transportation for Dexter Community School, and I wanted to put in a input on the sidewalk across on Dan Hoy also. I have personally witnessed a child almost get hit there. I've witnessed an accident where they were stopped, and someone ran into the back end of the car, and I was stopped. We have put a bus stop there, but my worry is when the kids miss the school bus, they're just darting across there, so. I'm really concerned about their safety, because that sun, when you come up Dan Hoy in the fall, is blinding, so. I'm here to help advocate for that sidewalk, give them sooner than later. There is a parent I know that has a wagon with a preschooler in it. Because she comes down our bus hop every day, and I'm worried, they just, they don't watch, and it's really dangerous. Someone's gonna get hurt there, so my concern is. We need to make the safest route we can, so I'm here to offer some input, and I didn't know, these guys were sitting at the same table as I was, but. So any input or questions you have, I would be happy to answer, but just wanna let you know who I was and why I was here.
Great, thanks so much for coming.
Yep.
Oh, what address?
I'm not an Dexter resident, but I work for Dexter.
We'll put down the school address or something.
Seven two two nine Marshall Road.
That works, but.
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks for letting me join.
Joseph, a couple of comments on the, on the discussion around the. Going to the attorney for counsel. We did have in the past, we had discussions about that. And basically, what we came down to was the village manager at the time we think, and city manager now, pretty much needs to consult with the lawyer on a regular basis. That's part of their duties. Counsel is actually already approved the manager to talk to the attorney, because you approve a budget, but it has line up for legal limit and for the charter, the city manager duties, including administration of the budget, so. Oh. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the nonarranged? Okay. We'll move down to communications. We have our upcoming meeting list in the back. Does anybody have any comments related to the upcoming meetings? On page thirteen.
Cat art is still a bit nomadic. We are going to have the Trail Town folks coming out this week at our next meeting at the top of November. So, okay, should be announced later.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on the meeting? Okay, so we'll move down to our first report this evening. Public Services Superintendent, welcome, Jim Stewart. How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
So two weeks in from you for the two week report. If there's any questions, I can field them out.
Did you put that here, Mr. Puriro, because I wanted to ask about. I asked that same question.
I seen it down there, and I didn't, I thought about that, but I was just like, no, they proved it enough, and.
Too bad, I just. All right, that's it.
No, don't look like any questions on what's written.
So everything, obviously, if you see what's happening, we're on third broad. Everything's good to go. Now, we're just waiting for it to appear. We're hoping that by week seven, yeah. So we'll see what happens for ours. It's been a fun weekend. But hopefully, everything's good. So it's, I got done, they tore it up on Friday, and related on Saturday, and it looks good, and they went into the COCO, our Washington COCO today.
We'll wait for an opening.
Yeah, so I got, once, once it's cleared enough, P and K is gonna come over, and they'll market our lines and stuff up, and they're ready to go, so soon.
Well, looks fantastic.
Yeah.
Not related to that, but I've noticed that a couple of folks have asked me, we have a number of spots for the sidewalk, it's the road, there's the handicap, the grumble strips, so folks know where hitting road, they're starting to pop and peel. Yes. Have we got a list and a plan to fix those?
Here it goes. Here it goes. I know he's, he's, he took up two recently, and he's gonna keep going as, as they keep coming up. I mean, obviously, there are a couple more out there, but it's kind of shorthanded right now with people actually streeting it.
So is, is there a plant that's the plastic one that seemed to be failing? Is there a plan to go with the steel?
Yes, so that was part of the sidewalk project. We're gonna go with steel to see, because they seem to hold up a lot better. Obviously, that was what we talked about this guy.
And actually, my puppy dog knows that that's where he has to sit before we cross the road, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Water meters.
So over the last two years, because of everything that's going on, and the shortage of every single thing that you do, do or say, it seems like, we've been having extremely hard time getting water meters that I'm actually using, I'm referring to all the time. Um, Dan and I sat down a couple of years ago and looked at a different avenue, because we were having a little bit of trouble with the company before this happened. One of the ways of doing it is, is it's cellular based type deal, and we put the meters in, and it gives a cellular, goes off the cellular, and, and it's, it's a whole. Software that they have in the front office that people and residents can actually go and get on their own, like a portal, so to speak, and look at their meter, what it's doing, it's got alarms and all this stuff. We're kind of, I, after having these major issues, um, we're gonna look towards doing that. I got, I sat down with Justin the other day, there's a lot to be answered. It's, in the long run, it's going to be eliminating the radio read on the outside, so by doing that. We don't have to install that. If they go bad, we don't have to replace them. It's getting rid of a component, and when you take the two together, actually with, I know those new prices. The meters we have now are actually more expensive than these ones coming in. So I'm gonna go do some more research, and when I sat down, I wanted to make sure he was gonna be on board with it, and I'll bring something back in the next couple of weeks or so, be able to tell over the door. So.
That's all, with the ability to monitor ourselves, would I be able to tell if I'm somewhere, if my water's running at home, because of place burst?
Yes, I mean, mind you, I'm just new to this area, so. But the way it sounds is, there's a lot of things with these new meters. They have ones now where you can actually have, if there's a shut off built into it, so for instance. You're somewhere, you can hit a button to shut your water off at home, or, and, or we could, but yes, this would set off an alarm to say your abnormal usage is up. You know, you're not using, using that much water now. It's extremely a lot, so yes, potentially.
I, I had a friend whose house popped when they went for a week vacation, so whenever I leave the house for more than a day, I shut that off, but I think it'd be very useful for folks.
I tell everybody, every time I go into a house, I say to them, listen, I, I show everybody where the shut off is. The first thing I always tell them is, if I leave for a significant amount of time, shut that off. So I do every single time. If it's anything more than two days, I shut it off, because it, I've seen what waters can do, especially if people don't catch it. So. But I think this is gonna be a bit, then, we just gotta look into it some more. I don't wanna jump the gun at once, but. I just actually got a new word, I'm actually use that I ordered in March today. So. And that's how, I, I got meters that have been ordered since February that I haven't got, so.
Can I go back to third and fraud for a second?
Yeah.
How has that project gone financially? Are we?
So last time I.
Are we expecting orders?
Yeah, we're, we, I, I don't believe we're expecting significant overage. But, but, but we, we do, we are in a period of liquidated damages, and so if there are any overages, we can use liquidated damages as a negotiating tool.
You know, I, I. Just relative to Tim, while you're up here, and Dan's comments and such, you know, sometimes projects need additional work, and things get added. I think from a. Board perspective, we just like to know what direction things are headed, because, you know, if in. On any of the projects, if you discover something that's needed, I think this board over the years has always been very. Accommodating and adjusting, you know, wanting to adjust on the fly, so to the extent that things aren't surprises, that's the, that's the best way, but we're obviously supportive of investing in the infrastructure, you know that, so.
Yeah, and I, like Dan, to even go over what he said too, is that. When we first start talking about, because this is new to me, about asking for stuff like that, so he was guiding me through some of that stuff, and when we originally did it, I mean, we were talking about a significant under. And then it kept winding down, and then we got this a couple of weeks ago, and I was kind of surprised myself, and we sat down at a meeting about it, so. And, yeah, like you said, I understand there are certain things, and I'm glad the board is, who wanted to do that, and go. And yeah, like you said, I understand there are certain things and I'm glad the board is willing to do that and go up and above and be proactive about things, so.
Cool. Well, if we, if we, if we end up completing projects, around a million and a half improvements. And there's a hundred thousand dollars. It's not, it's not awful in the grand scheme of construction. Appreciate your time. I don't have any further questions.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Next up is our community development. Is she online there?
Yes.
She's facing away from me, so I have a hard time seeing that. Thank you for that. That's great.
Good evening, Sean and council. How are you all doing today?
Good, Michelle.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so you have my two week report. Before I go into any updates or anything on the report, I would like to apologize to council and also Mr. McCarker. I had indicated in my zoning ordinance update, the public hearing that was conducted, that written statement that he presented at the meeting was included with my report. And I neglected to include it. I thought I had and I didn't. And so I apologize. I'll make sure that you get a copy of it via email tomorrow. So, um, before I go into anything else, do you have any questions or comments for me?
Yeah, this might be too detailed for right now, but regarding the grass and weed control ordinance, it just looks like, is it correct that it went from over eight inches to then over six inches? And I just want to add some clarity on that.
So that was the direction of council back in the July, I believe it was July eleventh council meeting. The request was made that it be reduced to six inches. Personally, I think six inches is a bit of an overreach and eight inches is, would be my preference. But if council wants six, then we'll include six.
Okay, thanks. And are you gonna be talking more about that in your update?
Yep. But if you've got questions now, go, let's go for it. That's fine.
That was the only one I had regarding that.
Okay. So. I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
Zach, Zach has a question, Michelle.
Don't, don't need an answer tonight, but I'm gonna be asking it when it comes before the planning commission, the High Line Spirits tasting room. It'd be good to get a description of how it's a tasting room, if the products are prepared in a different place and how it's not just a bar or restaurant. Again, don't need an answer tonight, but when it comes up before this.
Okay, I could if you wanted tonight, Zach. But I'll wait if you would prefer.
Wait while expression on my making decision.
I'll make a note of that right now. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, as I've identified in my update, excuse me, I came away from the meeting with an incorrect idea that council wanted to put off doing the lawn and weed amendment until the, till I came to you in about six months or so with the rental inspection ordinance. After talking with Justin and then looking at the the recording of the meeting and then a subsequent conversation with Sean, I was the one that was had the wrong information or somehow miscommunicated in my own head. So I, I still present the question to you, but so that you had a better understanding of where staff is at in the process. I included a, the rough draft I've got started of the overgrown lawns and weed ordinance. So if that is something you wanted to do sooner rather than later, we could get this moving sooner rather than later if you want it.
I will prefer to do it. I mean, if it's, if it's ready to go, I also agree with you that eight inches is what I would keep it as at one six. I wasn't advocating for a change. Or we would be advocating for a change in that, but.
I think it's better to do it now, so that people are molly again, we've already gotten that.
Well, I mean, if it, if it has to change because something else we do down the road, then we change it. But I don't know why we wouldn't. This is ready to go. I will, I will
I agree.
Take the steps in front of us. Zach?
I'd agree. I just offer a couple of quick comments as this gets refined. I would recommend that the noxious or harmful vegetation at any height, there are some plants that can be less than that and it still comes harm and invasive and do all sorts of nasty things. Just make, it's in the title there, but just to make sure that it's not any vegetation, it's grass and those pesky things. I'd also like to find an off ramp or an ability for natural areas, like in the parks, that it's clear that those areas can have taller, also for areas where folks may have kind of natural prairie stuff going on, like we've got down at Mill Creek, but that's allowed. That's it.
I certainly can add those in. The way you had just mentioned, the park areas and the natural areas also makes me triggers that we do have some people that do rain gardens, so I will incorporate language to cover all that. And is that the consensus of council that this should come sooner rather than later? Since I'm not there, I can't see you all, so.
If I have this come sooner, I'm fine if six changes to eight, I'm fine if the suggestion did that.
Thank you.
So everybody's not in the show, so when you're.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me. We, we can't, we'll be talking about the subdivision control or subdivision ordinance later on your agenda, so I won't go into anything there. But you will also notice in the supplement, I've provided a fairly detailed update on enforcement for eighty two fifty here on Street. And if you've got any questions or comments, I'm happy to address those.
Is the property owner is cooperating?
The property owner and the occupant are cooperating, yes.
Good. Appreciate the update on that.
Okay, that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. None of our board commissioner reports are bold, and so unless anybody has an update from something that's happened in the last couple of weeks, I'll move on down to the city manager report.
Before I get into it, maybe have any question?
I have a couple I meant to submit and then I stopped sitting in my draft folder this afternoon. So I'm sorry, I did not get that to you. There about just line items in the budget or in the payroll or what do you call it?
Yeah, the bills and payroll. Yeah.
There was pest, pest control services on Park Ridge. It looked like a residential item. I'm just curious.
So if, if, if there's like bees or hornets that make a nest in a, in a street tree, then we send somebody out to, to take care of that.
Okay. Blinking on that, I think it's gonna happen in our room. And then there's some staff dental benefits. I'm just curious how, on page forty eight, some mention about direct payment student offices. I'm just curious how our dental benefits work for staff.
Yeah, so in the union contract, staff is entitled to up to a thousand dollars per calendar year of additional dental reimbursement, either to them or to the debt, dental office that performs services. So when you go and have a procedure performed, there's gonna be a certain amount that's covered by insurance and a certain amount that may not be covered by insurance. And so through the union contract, employees are entitled to up to a thousand dollars towards that amount that is not covered.
Okay. And then on page fifty two, it talks about the bridge cards for the farmer's market. So I think we had some presentation just about how you can have a brief summary about how those work.
So I believe we get a grant through the state and then folks are able to take their bridge cards, make a purchase from a vendor at the farmer's market, and then we reimburse the vendor from that pool of grant funds.
Thank you. And then you have a preview of upcoming meetings and topics coming up. That's really at the end of your.
Yeah, page thirty.
I just saw that that last meeting in December is not on there. And I think some communities don't have that last meeting in December. I think we have had it in the past, so I just didn't know if it's not being included on that, that we've decided we're not having that meeting, or if that's a TBD thing, or no, we are having.
So, so, so we, we do usually have that meeting. It's usually a pretty short, quiet meeting. I, I, I probably didn't, I didn't think of it, because we don't usually have a lot of that.
Other questions for guests? For speakers?
Sure. So just a couple of short things. The fall newsletter went out of the mail on Friday. Folks may have already received a copy of it. We do have a new DPW hire, Evan Flack. He is a resident of Westridge in the city. He worked for us for this last summer as summer help and we're able to extend him an offer to bring him on board full time. We'll be having the fall cleanup day October seventeenth for folks to put out additional bulk items. And I got news today that the Huron River watershed calendar should be coming out here in the next couple of weeks. I know a lot of folks look, look forward to that. As well, it's, it's, it's usually very well done, very pretty, lots of, lots of nice pictures from around the area.
Thanks. Yeah, I meant to answer about this last week. A lot to turn into Mill Creek Middle School. You talked about maybe bringing that back.
Yeah. So, so I did reach out to O H M and they owe me a proposal.
Thank you.
One question to you, Justin. Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, very good. Is the, does anybody have any questions about my recommendation for Hannah? And then.
Say one thing about that.
Sure.
She, like, like myself, is a college graduate, theater major, so I know what she was put through in college. And I actually work with her a bit. She's, she's younger than me, but I was still working in professional theater when she graduated. So I was, I worked with her a while back and she is excellent. And I think it's great recognition.
Great. Great. I'm glad that she's interested in doing it. Nice conversation with her last week. I do have, I have confirmed the October thirteenth meeting with John Kingsley of Webster Township, Norman Radvich of Dexter Township. Silotown supervisor will have to, will not be playing, but we're gonna continue to discuss the potential creation of an authority for the Dexter seniors. And I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that I was able to get a copy of the draft or, or a copy of the vertical incorporation from near Star River City. I shared that with Mr. Carson over at Dexter Senior Center. He found a way to recreate it off the PDF. So they're, they're involved in helping with that a little bit. Soon as I have a clean version of it after the meeting, I'll share with you. So you'll see that. Coming up some. That's all I really have to report. Somebody have any questions for me? Looking forward to our meeting on Thursday. Hopefully, it's well attended here in this room. Cover that item on the. Okay, we'll keep that moving. We're down to consent agenda, assuming there's no other councils on reports on there.
I can do a quick verbal report.
Okay.
So I'm on the Michigan Municipal League Economic Development Land Use Legislature Committee. I think I know all the words in there. Meets roughly quarterly, whenever there's legislation in Lansing pending related to that, they, our bat signal gets together and see what's going on. A couple of things that are going on of interest is there's an effort to redo the Meetings Act. We're gonna be taking out some of the language that popped up during COVID times. They're also trying to make the language more English, is a less attorney, so they're taking off a bunch of here to for, here and after, those types of stuff to make it just easier. The other thing of interest is, again, the rental, short term rental has popped up out of nowhere. So it basically preempts local government's ability to regulate short term rentals. It's back in the floor of the Senate. Call your senator, Mrs. Tice right now, and if you don't like it, that's all.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, any other council articles? Okay, we'll move on to Kay. The consent agenda.
We approved the three items listed down in the consent agenda. It feels like we're only amount of two hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and fifty one cents. Setting for three hours from five to seven thirty on the thirty first and the appointment of Anna Simmons to A C H.
Please do a second.
A second.
Thank you both. Ken, please call the vote to approve the three items on the consent agenda.
Well, Griffin, yeah, Fisher, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes, Theo.
Yes. Curious, thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we're down to the new business items this evening. There are seven of them. Item one, consideration of the direction regarding the proposed Dan White sidewalk plan. Zach?
I'll, I'll move to segments three and four. Everybody double check. That would be the crosswalk, the cross from Hilltop and the segment running from Hilltop to Bishop Circle.
That's actually by myself. Second, thank you. Okay, so that is, that is a motion to move forward with segments three and four. As, as listed in the document. But for the public, that's the seven hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk along the south side of Dan White from the new Hilltop Apartments. East to eastbound road. That would be that gap. And then segment four is a mid block crossing directly across Hilltop to just east of the bus entrance drive.
Then one other qualification?
Those, those two for discussion.
Yep.
And then I wanted to get some discussion, I can say one of those.
Okay, submission by Michelle, second by Fisher. Okay. Do you have an update on things or?
Well, I can, you'll get a little background. So this came up during city council goals and objectives. Looking at the sidewalks along Dan Boy in general. And we're planning to do a Dan Boy Road project in the summer of twenty twenty three as our next major road project. So it, it kind of made logical sense to look at, at the sidewalk situation in conjunction with the Dan White Road project. So we had tasked O H M with looking at what, what is possible in this area. And, and I believe that I provided an update in my manager report a while back that Avalon and the Dexter Community Schools had reached out and asked for a meeting on the sidewalks in this area. And so myself, O H M and Danny or Tim and Kurt all met with Mr. Wesley and Craig McCollough, thank you, from, from the schools onsite. And O H M took all that information back and incorporated that into their, into their evaluation to look at, you know, what, what really made sense for this area. And O H M also provided some, some projected cost estimates, what it would cost to, to do each segment. The idea that we could address it as a, as an à la carte. You know, here are these different potential segments that we could, we could address. The, the segments to the west closer to Baker Road do become a little bit more challenging. do become a little bit more challenging. The north side near the cemetery, there's a lot of mature trees and it's very tight in that area. The segment on the south side, there's a significant grade change. And there are also stormwater ditches, I believe, on that side, which would make those two segments more expensive and more challenging to address.
Zach. And that's why I proposed three and four. The others are important, but these, these are the easiest to get out. It provides connections both, both ways for folks who want to get through there. I, one of the things I do hear from folks in Dexter Crossing, those that the route to get from there to Alarette is kind of ridiculous still. So that's still, that's still the result, but those, those are really big trees. That's going to be a bigger deal.
Yeah.
I would say for the, the crosswalk, a couple of things that I'd like to point out there is I, I hope we can stop having the ridiculous turn to the right thing. So people are forced to look at the roads. It, it ends up with really weird geometry that makes it very painful to use bikes. So the one on Baker Road, you come in, you do the sharp turn, right? That's intended so that you're looking at the traffic. That's, that's kind of gone out of favor. I would also like to see if it's possible for us to do an elevated crossing. They have some of these in Brighton. If you want to go look, just the, the sidewalk is like two inches up above the road and there's a very gradual ramp. It's a very clear signal when you're driving through that pedestrians are important here. I'd like to see lots of other places, but I'd like to see us, if we could work that in there. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, you have a second on the motion? Anything else?
No, I'm glad. I just want to make sure we get the crossing and cross. Oh, the Hilltop Crossing is most important for me.
And then sorry, for, for just a little bit more background. I, I do believe and maybe Ed Mark can, can add something to this. But I believe that we also looked at the sections to the west on the north and south side as part of the Seafrost to School project and as part of the roundabout project. And there, there were some, I think, the, the same reasons why we didn't do those segments then with the same reasons why those segments would be difficult today.
That's correct. The, just pull the, the item back from two thousand and thirteen, this last time. At that time, we were evaluating connectivity between the east and then getting over towards Bay to Baker Road. And ultimately, we decided we're going to route goes behind the cemetery. We elected that time to go behind the cemetery and down the hill. And if I, my memory serves me correct, I think the deciding factor is actually the trees on our side of Danboy. Since two thousand and thirteen, a few of them died. So, you know, they are getting older, obviously, so. But it's still a big decision to take out that, that large of trees that has a certain look and feel as you go down towards Baker. So I think that's going back through two thousand and fifteen. But it was half the price back then. Thanks, Ben.
Yep.
Hi. I live in Walkabout Creek. I walk to Mill Creek using that sidewalk actually every day for two years. I also obviously still live there. I drive it and have my car. But I, the sun that was referenced, I a hundred percent agree is a huge issue when I pull out my parking spot and I start going this way. It blinds me every day. I'm worried that when people pull out of Walkabout Creek neighborhoods and turn right on that road to drop kids off that, that without a sidewalk, if people are running across, especially, especially since cars get backed up. So kids see that and think they can run past because the cars aren't moving. That people will not be able to see that, especially if they're taken off guard by the sun. So I think a sidewalk would be great, especially if it was like an elevated crosswalk or something that was very noticeable. Because I know how, even though I drive to school every day, I still will sometimes turn into school parking lot and be like, oh, right, that's all.
Thank you.
So, I mean, you know, obviously we stay here that this project would be starting in June twenty twenty three. Seeing that there's a lot of school between now and then, is there anything we can do at a temporary measure? Because, I mean, it's, it's important. I mean, as somebody who personally has experienced a tragic event with a car and person, I don't want that to happen to anyone else, especially not a child. And so if there's anything we can do to like Band-Aid it, I would be all for that. And anything we can do to make it, you know, obvious in light of all this sun talk too, I don't know how we how we.
Mr. Burns has some blocking device. I think season three or four of The Simpsons, we could get that.
Okay, that'd be great.
What, what's the, Patrick Marcus, what's the rough lead time on ordering a rapid flashing beacon?
That's a great question. We can ask and get back. Everything is hard to get. Traffic signals is no exception.
I mean, you could pour concrete onto the road to make it look like a sidewalk, but I don't think we really want the crosswalk without the beacons, right?
Yeah.
So we gotta, we gotta time that.
Well, and I guess, you know, I obviously don't have a solution to this. I'm just wondering if anyone else does.
It's dangerous out there.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I tried it. It didn't work.
What were you for the rapid flashing beacon?
I think the proposing one, right up that light blue line that would cross from Avalon line straight across. Whoever was using it, whether it was a kid or a parent or whoever.
I pictured we.
Could try to get somebody to slow down.
I had the wrong view. I took it back.
A police officer may be driving the speed limit earlier. Because it doesn't drive till seven forty five. It needs to be more like seven thirty.
And, and we, we, we have had a request to reduce the.
Or to change the hours of that?
To change the hours back. Yeah.
We just need to prepare traffic.
Yeah. So I, I've been talking to OHM about how to do that. Just, just to make sure that like there, there isn't anything that we, you know, need to go through like with the school to change the, the school zone hours.
Good comment.
Yep. So along Danboy, I guessing there are students coming from Walkabout Creek, Hilltop View and also Dexter Crossing. I'm just curious. I don't know if the rep from, I forgot your name, the rep from school, making contact with you. Have you noticed any other crossing difficulties along that stretch? I don't know if you're only situated along that by the school entrance or if you've noticed anything along the whole stretch.
Also, the going to Creekside, the sidewalk there is. When I see them, I send them down behind the cemetery and through the school and down to that crossing guard on Baker Road. And that is the way that we were teaching the ones that were going to Creekside. Because the cops were paying for them. And we walked them down back behind the cemetery, down by Bates and through the crossing there over on Baker Road. Is how Creekside is getting there.
Have you been on that site?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, you don't worry too.
But so those are just the students from Hilltop? Or I guess I'm just curious of how well, do you know how well the rapid flashing beacon that is further east is working?
The one I talked about is great.
Okay.
That one works great. And the one up by Dexter Crossing, there's a.
Those seem to be working fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
The ones I work in time.
And then this might be a question for OHM. I mean, I know we, if you're looking at block by block, you have crosswalks that are extremely proximate. Is there anything about the proximity of adding a new crosswalk there given where the other existing crosswalk is? Closer to.
Great question. Yeah. And so we did look at, we've already had our traffic engineers look at the both the site distance and the spacing, the separation from the existing. And it's an appropriate location. And actually Avalon preference was that the crosswalk would actually line up with the sidewalk that had the development. And just so happens that it works well here east of the school drive then. So you got separation from the buses coming in and out at that location. The site distance is appropriate and there's sufficient separation from the existing. So we've already looked at that. We haven't done the detailed, you know, ADA grading of it. Let's roll through the flat there. So we don't see an issue.
And then, and then that, that the blue crossing is kind of at the top of a hill. So that like Mark said, the, the site distance is, is really good. You can see you're kind of at the top of the hill looking at neither direction.
So yeah, we, we don't see any issue with from a cracker safety standpoint of putting it where it's shown.
And you're crossing two lanes there as opposed to wider pavement sections to the east.
So when the rapid flashing beacon was added further down by Dexter Crossing, there was an existing crosswalk that's closer to the entrance of that east drive into the schools. Is that crosswalk and now there's like no flashing beacon there at all? Is that just planned to go away? Are you keeping that original crosswalk in favor of the one that's the rapid flashing beacon? Or do you know what I'm trying to talk about? This is not just.
Yeah, I'm not picturing it, but that would be evaluated as part of the road design. I don't know up hand, but.
Okay, so it's when you're leaving the eastern, like past the tennis courts, east of the tennis courts. Right at that driver when you come out, I think there, there's an existing crosswalk, maybe that predated the rapid flashing beacon one that's further east.
Okay.
So then I go, so I feel that, so I guess maybe what I'm saying is I would not want to see, maybe that one could go away and that one would be fine. I don't think I would want to see the existing crosswalk coming out of Walkabout Creek go away. Because that's directly going to that path down. Okay.
But actually all the ADA for that whole corridor, because we're also looking at Lexington, the bank, now there's a kind of a weird crosswalk on that. That's part of the project to evaluate if that cleaned out, make sure that accessible routes are appropriate.
I mean, in terms of that north segment, I guess it's a question either for council or for supposed to be segment two. I like that. I don't know how impossible that is. I like segment two because it is such a job. And we do have, if you see, it connects really nicely to what appears to be a newer sidewalk there on Baker, you know, for that Creekside accessibility. I don't know. Do you just feel like it's just not possible or it's just, it's just not possible or?
It, it's possible. I mean, we, we took the measurements, we did a site evaluation. The, the, the old mature trees is, is something that they would need to come out and for it to fit. We did look back at the original roundabout design right away. It's pretty tight getting around that northeast corner. But it fits.
Right. We're definitely way better north than south for sure. Not the distance.
South, south. We didn't even include that as an option just because it was so challenging with the grades. And you'd be looking at a, for a right away acquisition and a retaining wall probably the whole, the whole stretch. That's why that wasn't included in the à la carte list.
Right.
Yeah, the, the retaining wall would be significant.
I have one more comment, but it's not. I used to have a comment, I think, Michelle, I don't know if you're still there. And I guess this is sort of a general comment. So my understanding, you know, one of the major perks of this development was the proximity to the schools for the children that would likely be living there. I think it was a missed opportunity that this wasn't more closely evaluated then. And perhaps Avalon's financial contribution towards this crosswalk wasn't included as a public benefit. It seems to me that's something that would make sense in that context.
Well. In reference to segment two, in sixth grade, the lack of the sidewalk was the reason why I did not walk home from school. I have walked the, by that graveyard like fifty or a hundred times because I've walked down to downtown. And every time I walked down, I do think, why is there not a sidewalk here? Now I know. But additionally, I've walked on the side of the road because there wasn't one and it's so difficult to walk there. And I think that's not safe. This sidewalk, I think, out of all of those, the one that I think is needed the most. Or at least it's the one that would affect my life the most.
Which one is that?
The segment two.
Because you're going from.
Because that's the way I walk from my house to downtown Dexter. And also Alarette and Mill Creek or Creekside.
So you don't, you don't come down Dunbar Drive to Baker and use that sidewalk at all?
Um.
Which?
Where? Okay. No.
You come out towards Baker on that entrance? And then there's sidewalk on the east side. Cross, I mean, cross over anywhere you want. Did you write it from the bell right there?
So no, generally I walk down by the graveyard because that's, I don't know. I just like whenever I walk to downtown Dexter, because you go and stuff, that's the way I went. I just didn't think about it. I, I could go that way. But also where my apartment is, I live directly across from the graveyard. I can almost see it. So I'm much closer to, I live like right next to Danboy Road. So that's, that's why I walk around that.
When we did the roundabout, it was, it was an important discussion designed to tie in the sidewalk from Dunbar to Baker and have two crosswalks there. So I was, I was curious, since you're bringing the perspective of living there, how often do you use so?
If I lived even the other side, I would use that road. And when I walked home from homecoming last year, I did use the roundabout road.
Okay. Second.
I just brought, I would like to see that segment come back. I'd also like staff to research Seafrost to Schools money so that we don't have to put the whole bill for it. It is, it is tight now that it's only that one. That there's no left turn there. We may have an opportunity to grow a little bit too. That's definitely an important segment. And I'm just surprised that we don't have to move that light post there. That looks awfully close to that corner. But I guess the big thing is I'd like, like for staff to find out, save route to school funding is this would be a really important segment, please.
Okay, so, so far we have a motion by Zach Michelle, second by Don Fisher for segments three and four. If further discussion needed.
Looks like, yeah, based on Zach's comment, did, did you want to amend your motion to include segment two?
No, it's just.
No, he's asking for you to do this.
Okay, okay.
To bring it back in.
Can I just ask? Zach provide more clarification about why you want segment three?
Because it's a relatively easy one and it provides a lot of flexibility for folks who are in Dexter Crossing that they could then cross it three different spots along the segment depending on what traffic's doing and same for Hilltop. It's, it's a relatively long stretch for the. Wolfwood.
Okay, Ms. Kim, please call the vote to approve segments three and four as far as the Danboy. Like, 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 why are we, how much do we have budgeted for this?
Yeah, I, I think we have. I want to say we have, we have two hundred thousand in the current fiscal year with the idea that this project will split. It started in likely June of twenty twenty three when school gets out and then it'll roll over into twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Okay, it's good.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin? Yes. Fisher? Yes. Hubbard? Yes. Theo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that item, everybody. New business item M two is consideration of the Second Street Water Main Replacement and Sidewalk Insulation Project. Final balance and change order for a month not to exceed ninety seven thousand, three ninety four eighty three. As we remember, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'm going to group the Second Street Water Main Replacement and Sidewalk Insulation Project final balancing charge order for the amount that can see ninety seven. Three or ninety four dollars.
Thank you. Discretion, because there's a second. Thinking discussion because there's a second. There's not a second.
I can do that.
Let's at least do it for discussion.
Yeah.
Or else the motion.
Gone, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Second by Fisher. Okay, we at least have something out here. Turn it over to you again. Okay, yes.
So this item is, it has been talked about multiple times already, is what we call a final balancing change order. Uh, for the project, which, um, we haven't had a lot of these because usually as the note indicates, we typically have not had. This problem and. You know, to to be clear, this is definitely, uh, you know, not something that we've ever strived to see this happen. Our goal on these projects and the same our goal, Moi Jem's perspective. Is we're, we're hired to manage kind of the construction contract portion. Work with the contractor, make sure these projects are completed on time and within budget. And there were several things in this project that really made that difficult for us to do. And I think to some point made earlier. Things come up, changes happen, but it's important that we are coming to. Staff and council ahead of time, so we're not facing this issue where we're coming at the end of the project. Um, and I think there's a couple of items about as to why this came up the way it did. Some of it goes back a little bit to the process that we developed for this particular project on Second Street. Uh, where we really did. Kind of going off some of the lessons of the past. Wanting to make sure we've constructed, designed that sets us up for the future. We basically detailed additional work beyond what was intended to be in the original bid. Uh, and that was because we knew at some point in time, Second Street would get reconstructed. Uh, we want to make sure we put the water main and sidewalk in a spot that allowed them to sustain. And then so when the road project did happen years later, we wouldn't have a situation where we had. Option, we had to tear out work or. A lot of ways, something that's kind of built off of what we experienced on Grand Street where. Sidewalk and water main were put in two thousand and ten and then we came back in about, you know, twelve years later to do Grand Street. We were really, we had a design around that and it resulted in a little bit of a situation where we kind of had. To really tightly design and make sure that everything was honed in with curb locations and it was kind of a typical design if people on Grand Street. We have the curb and sidewalk are very close together. It works, but it's, it was not necessarily the ideal situation. So with that in mind, we we had developed a design that really thought ahead about what the future of Second Street would look like. Unfortunately, it happened when we did go to bid. Some of those quantities were taken out, but they should have been left in. And so what basically went out to bid for the contractor. Was not a true representation of what the, of the work was in terms of when we say the bid form. So when we bring a documentary, an item to council, we'll often have bid tabs tracked attached to that. Which is basically a summary of expected quantities and then the contractor can provide prices for all those. And we use that map basically to basically determine how to pay the contractor fairly for the work that's done. Um, what then I guess happened. As we managed the project, we were in the construction phase. Typically, as we are making projections about how much work is remaining. Uh, we we basically will kind of pull some of those quantities that we haven't yet paid for off on the side. That's usually paving, um, and restoration. Uh, and then we we just kind of basically keep that math to the side as we manage the project. And we can kind of get a feel for where things are at. Unfortunately, when we did the final balancing, which is when we take the final points of everything. It was then realized at that time that we had basically admitted a lot of that, that final hard scape work. Uh, and some of that was impacted by some of the utilities relocated. Um, and just the fact that we ended up disturbing more area that was on the original bid floor. So from our perspective, in O H M, um, you know. Again, we, we've not really been in this situation very often. We usually try to build in kind of an assumed. We call contingency in the contracts, so there's things that run over. That's typically like, we'll provide a little extra for asphalt aggregate, that could be managed within the contract. Um, because there was. Items were omitted, that just wasn't the case. And as as a result, we're now here at this point where we have to come back to council after the fact, which again is is absolutely not our preferred way of doing this. And, um, from our perspective, um, you know, there were things both during construction and design where. We need to be better at O H M. We've talked about changing our processes. We're going to. Work to bring more quality control as part of the design process. Uh, and then on the, on the management of the construction side, more frequent updates to make sure that we're tracking, you know, online with. With the construction budget. And that's really what we've seen on Third and Broad Street. Which, I mean, M dot projects were basically running estimates every two weeks, so we're much more on top of it. Sometimes our local projects will only run one or two estimates. Just because the paperwork can be a lot of, it's a lot of work to develop that paperwork for the contractor in O H M. So sometimes we can agree to do fewer estimates and that might have been the case on Second Street. And then, of course, to be more upfront, if there are changes, as we've noticed, we'll certainly bring those to staff and then the council as necessary. Um, and so as a, as a, I guess, just an indication on that. I've talked with Justin that, um, that, you know, O H M is certainly a part of the issue here and we will. Basically contribute to some of the overage. And again, we, we do have a responsibility from our perspective and, you know, we've done a lot of these. I mean, we do projects every year, two or three projects every year. We've never really had this, this type of issue. We want to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's our. Both be part of the solution, but then also continue to improve our process to do better in the future. Tim had mentioned earlier about pot hoeing and other procedures. You know, I I think of that like when we, when we do a project, we also do do geotechnical evaluations. We have a pretty good feel about what the soils are around town. Uh, but we still a lot of times will do additional whorings anyway. I think we're going to look to to do in our, our pot hoeing the same way. Just to kind of assume that we're going to do it on every project that we're doing underground where, just to make sure that we're just checking things. We may think we know where it is, but the pot hoeing is relatively inexpensive in Grand Street. It provides a little better understanding of the project before we get into it. Um, so with that, I think I can certainly open it up if there's questions or concerns myself and Marcus can help to answer any questions that they only have.
I have one. I think I saw it on Marcus's, um, letter. So was there a first change order for forty-two and then the second one for ninety-seven?
Correct. Yes, the first change order was the addition of ditch enclosure on the south side. From central over. That was basically, um, that was a request of EPW that while we're here, couldn't get us enclosed and that was brought to council before that work.
Yeah, we saw that ahead, right? That's, okay, so we were on top of that one, okay. I'm just trying to remember what the original bid amount was and so the total then that we've added is a hundred and thirty-nine. Okay. All right, so, so then the storm sewer work that's referenced here that the city asked for. Uh, item three, city directed urgent work, that eighteen thousand is more storm sewer over above the original forty-two that we had talked about. Okay. Okay, it's not clear where that exactly is.
It was scattered throughout the project, but it was.
That's why I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it was, um. It was scattered between, there was a section.
I trust, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't double drawn or something, that's all. Thank you. Uh, from my perspective. You know, first of all, if if this was under five thousand dollars, he could administratively do it because he has the right to spend. If I have not ran it for us. I think as a board, our, our job is we have to approve this because our procedures, let's, let's say we do what we've obviously spent the money. If there's any. Arrangement that you come up with with O H M. I would leave that, I think, properly to the management superintendent to work through and you can report back. But I mean, I think our action tonight is to make sure that we can get the, the final project. We have to prove the expenditure. We should do that, I think, at a time and manner. Obviously, all the work's been done. Some of this we would have probably approved ahead of time had the quantities been right on the plans and everything's understood by everybody. But if there's, if there's something between the city and O H M that you. Or the two of you work through, I, you know, I don't want to try and do that here. Thank you. Our, our role is, is over the project, we need to discuss that in generally, decide what's, what's proper to add, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I was going to say this would have come to us and the total amount would have been this actual total amount. I can't say I would have.
Right.
And again, if this is something that we had seen as a recurrent pattern of behavior, then I think maybe it elevates to a decision here. Uh, I don't feel inclined to not approve it.
And one other. Kind of to make. The contractor really has been cooperative in this process. Uh, O H M worked through the details of reconciling all these quantities. Measure stuff three, four times, some of it and got agreement. Uh, so the contractor has agreed, um, to the, to this number, so that there's. This is the final number. And they did give, they, they, there was claims that they had originally that they abandoned essentially. So, um, we worked through that process with them. They, um, you know, I really felt like they were part of the team. Took those, the numbers that you had in front of you to, uh, and to Tim and Justin. And one of Justin's requests was go back at him again and see if they'll give anything else off. They weren't inclined to do that. We believe that they're all what's, what's on there. I just wanted to note on the record that there was a negotiation. They did ask for more than what's, what's out here originally.
Well, this was an important project because it was the last bit of really old water main. Down in that section of the city and we should feel good about getting that updated and the sidewalk along there is. And, you know, I use it, so I'm happy with that. I know the residents do, I think, are too, so.
And and the grass does appear to be growing.
Yes, it does. Well, time and patience on you. So. We paid for engineering design services for help with the bids and for overseeing construction. Were thirteen, three, thirteen point three percent over. This isn't the first time there's a project, I can't remember which one, uh, within the past couple of years, that was over fourteen thousand years over. I guess my question, my quick question would be of the ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents that it's over here. How much of that roughly is due to changes the city asked for and how much of that is due to errors from O H M of not specing out proper quantities or not requiring proper pipe?
Well, I think it's summarized in the memo and there's a kind of tried to group everything into the five reasons. But but short answer, I mean, we had, we had the conflicts with existing utilities. Working back charge to. But really the quantities and the specification. Comes up to. Thirteen thousand, ten thousand. Thirty, about fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, my, my answer is going to be the eighteen thousand plus the eighty-six hundred. Because we got reversed for that. Or we will get reversed, but.
We have.
We already have that, so that, that, that part of the ninety-seven is just passed, it's passed, it's passed, it's passed, it's not really anybody's fault, it's just. No, I don't want to say it, you're done, you're paid for it. So I, I'm comfortable paying with the changes that we initiated and, you know, the. The unforeseen stuff, the one, the six thousand, the seven thousand. The other stuff, we're paying to get professional engineer stamps on it. We're, we're trusting folks. Who've been licensed, who've been educated to make sure the quantities are right. And the specs are right. I'm, I'm not comfortable paying with the other. That's all. What?
I do tend to agree with Zach on that, especially since, you know, this is. Somebody that has worked on many things in the city and this isn't, I mean, these specs aren't news to them. So, I mean, I did. Yes, that's hard to say.
Well, hopefully the procedures are completely in place without having that, and again, that's what they're here trying to tell us. Always uncomfortable, we don't pledge itself. Did you have a motion? I appreciate that. My Griffin, seconded by Fisher. Uh, Ms. Pam, please call a vote to approve the final balance of change order.
Griffin, yeah. Michelle's?
No.
Hubbard? No. Fisher? Yes. Heel?
Yes. Okay, so we now have four votes.
But you do have a majority.
You do have a majority, so. Does that work in financial? I guess we have to just check. That's, that's. Motion or not, it would be the motion carrying if three will do it.
Yeah, I believe. Simple majority.
Okay, you know, my stuff?
I'll, I'll, I'll double check, okay.
All right, thank, thank you. Thank you both for your time tonight on the project. M three. Consideration of thirty-five fifteen Broad Street contract change order with Axiom Construction from amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, five sixty-three eighty-nine. By Fisher. Seconded by last second. Back to you, Justin.
So, um, we've, we've been progressing through the project. When we approved this project, um, we did not approve any contingency. We didn't approve any, any. Any additional funding over what was, was awarded to Axiom. We've been notified that, uh, there are some necessary changes with, based on the specs that were issued in the bid. Compared to what site conditions require. Um, I, I invited, um, Stephen Lutzman with ours in architecture, um, who should be on Zoom tonight.
Hello, Justin.
Can you hear me, Stephen?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to take it?
Sure, I can, I can contribute here. Uh, good evening, Dexter Council. Nice to see you this evening. A pleasure to be here. Basically available for any questions you may have related to the description of the items that had been included in our first bulletin. Uh, I gave this to Justin last week for some in-depth explanation on. The reasons why some of these were included in that first bulletin issued on May twelfth of this year. Axiom had yet to really progress with any work on site. And this was our first review of the documents in response to a, a number of items that were cited. By, uh, Washtenaw County in our plan review effort. Uh, those were relatively minor. There were also items in the field in the existing building. That became obvious that needed to be adjusted in our documents. Because conditions, uh, were found to be somewhat or mostly slightly different than what we had assumed. There was a lot of assumptions we had to have going forward because we couldn't really do any selective demolition in the building. Uh, it was very minor what we did doing in a couple of locations, cutting ceilings open to see what was above the jip board. We had a lot of, uh, interior demolition we had to do eventually to reconfigure the floor plan, especially on the first floor. To accommodate the new use, um, at the entry area for the public. And how the public would be interfacing with the staff. So there were some unknowns. We tried to cover by making, uh, educated assumptions about the building. And a couple of locations, we, we did have to incorporate some additional work and always with an eye towards. Uh, keeping it as minimum as possible in terms of any changes or adjustments. Because we knew we were proceeding ahead without any contingency to fall back on. So it's always been our, our goal along with Axiom. To review the items that came through this first bulletin and try to get the best value for the dollar to minimize any additional costs. Uh, some were, uh, difficult to do. Others came a little bit easier because we had some great team members on the Axiom team and their subcontractors to achieve that goal. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review the items. Uh, item one, um, it's structural details. This was kind of a cumulative, um, credit here. This was kind of a cumulative um credit here. There are little things and small items that were adjusted to lower the cost, so we ended up with a credit of five hundred and sixty dollars on that one. A few other items here involving steel where the credits were were nice to achieve. We did have to make some adjustments and some adds. And a number of those were associated with the elevator shaft. As the elevator manufacturer had a slightly divergent requirements from our standard approach to elevator design and the opening size for the rough, I'm sorry, the rough opening in the masonry to install the elevator. They required an opening as wide as the shaft, which uh for your team here, uh our past experience uh didn't see that as something that was going to be required by this manufacturer. Industry standard was typically allowing a little bit extra, a couple of feet each side of the door. They wanted the entire width of the shaft open. So it required us to revise the lintel and the bearing condition on the masonry for the lintel that's at the top of the opening. So I I think that was pretty much the most uh costly item of the uh things that we had to change, which was some reworking of the masonry shaft, which as of this date has been completed and it's in place. So it's a wider opening, change the header design and also the reinforcing of the shaft in the masonry. All added up to a a number of extra costs here, probably approaching eight thousand dollars for that one. Um, the rest of it here is, it was pretty minor. We had to uh, we worked well with the um base of the uh mechanical contractor to eliminate uh costs associated with plumbing uh for a sump pump in the elevator pit. Ended up saving um about five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars out of the original uh proposal. That went to zero, which I thought that was a wonderful thing to be able to achieve uh working with these guys. Uh, again, we did spend most of the summer whittling down the items on this list that were issued in May to try to get as much savings out of this as possible. Uh, however, we still ended up with uh a direct cost of thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Again, that's about um uh that plus the um, sorry, the uh general overhead and profit, uh general conditions and the contractor fee ended up at fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Amazingly, one point three percent of original construction bid, which uh for working on a hundred-year-old building with unknown uh conditions that had yet to be discovered is is way below typical industry standards in terms of um additional costs. Unfortunately, there were additional costs and uh uh again, by one point three percent of the original bid, which was nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, nobody likes to hear that, but uh we worked hard to try to keep it uh, keep it in check. Basically until we found out the building didn't have a foundation. So I think you're awfully familiar with that issue that came up in July uh at the area of the um elevator shaft installation. So uh this initial round was was fairly minimal and uh most of the work, I think all of the work actually, Justin, has been completed on that as we've spent the last three months really working to to minimize those numbers and reduce them where we could. That's my uh quick um Cliff Notes uh short version.
Thank you, Stephen.
Sure.
Other council questions?
Jenny? Yep. So we have our conversation about street balancing. Was there contingency on that project?
There was none. But I I think that that's something that we'll want to look at going forward on on substantial projects.
So that, yeah, I guess I had a similar question here that. So we're kind of in a situation where we have this big balancing changer on a previous project. And now you're in a situation where we didn't have any contingency. So that just struck me, I guess. So you're thinking that moving forward, these types of projects, we will.
So I understand old buildings, I can grow up in a house that was built in the eighteen eighties. Nothing's level, weird stuff going on. But to me, it seems like item S three, S four, E two, S seven and M one are not related to the age of the structure at all. We're related to the architectural designs, not looking at the specifications for the elevator. And my understanding, my recollection is that we bid out for the elevator ahead of time. I guess my question would be where where did it fall in the timeline? Again, I'm looking this this, if we knew what the elevator was and the people designing it just didn't look at the specs, that feels like a them problem that they should correct, not us.
Stephen, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. So I could say this, that obviously the elevator package and the uh the overall building renovation were both awarded to Axiom. And as they got involved in the project, uh we got a, we we found out that the submittal from Kone uh was requiring, because they were on board early, and our drawings were issued again, prior to the packages, both packages being bid and awarded. Uh, we got the information from uh Kone, uh actually later in the game, after the review was completed by uh Washtenaw County. And we had to make some adjustments at that point to be able to accommodate the elevator manufacturer's requirements. Um, so it was probably a couple of months after, actually maybe more like three or four months after the documents were released. And as we wrote the spec, obviously it had to be for a competitive bid. And so we left it open to any potential elevator manufacturer at that time. And sure, we had uh, we had documents uh based upon um elevator manufacturers' requirements for uh any given shaft. But there are nuances and depending upon which elevator package we go with from that manufacturer, they required different uh, different things be done with the elevator. So the documents had to be revised, even though the bid for the building and the elevator shaft was already let out. Uh, so we had to make some adjustment to accommodate Kone. I mean, it was pretty simple at the time. But obviously, the bid numbers came in and reflected something closer of on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar ele- elevator installation. About seven or eight thousand dollars for the adjustment. Uh, we argued that as much as we possibly could to try to make sure that we got the best value for the owner. And uh, it still ended up being a little extra cost ba- basically for the length of the precast little and the reinforcing in the jams, because there's a longer span. Uh, and that being it, um uh, that was pretty much the only uh change associated with the elevator.
Those things, there's David Gass, and I'm just gonna pipe in a little bit here. So those are the specifics of the cost, but the real essence of it is when you're preparing a specification for an elevator, which is very proprietary per manufacturer, they all do it a little different.
Right.
We don't do a basis of design that says it's going to be this manufacturer, because if we do, that eliminates competition from those that we don't name. So we make it as general as we can, allowing all manufacturers to participate. We get a better competitive market and lower bid price. In this case, we got a really good bid price. I don't know, multiple thousands less than what was budgeted, ten or fifteen thousand, or recall. So the approach was allow all manufacturers to participate, keeping it gentle in the bid specs and like even said, the timing was such that we had adjusted afterwards based on the manufacturer's specific open requirement.
So.
Thank you.
Speak plainly, we had the general design specifications before we knew the elevator.
The elevator is until after you accept the bid. Uh, because each general bid could be a number of elevator manufacturers. You don't know until the bid is accepted which manufacturer it is, unless you specify it specifically uh as a sole manufacturer type, which if you do, you eliminate competition.
Right.
That that sounds like it's an us issue for not realizing the difference between what the the design spec for the building was and for the elevator when we put the elevator.
Um, it's, that's a very, I'll say it's ninety-nine percent of the time uh that way. Unless you know, you have ten different buildings and you already have elevators, you want it to be the same. Then you expect that elevator for your tenth building, though it matches your other nine, your service reasons, et cetera. Whether you pay more upfront because you're buying it without, you're sole sourcing it essentially. In this case, we avoid that, so you get competition on bid day.
There you go.
You have to react with the successful bidder.
Perfect. Okay, one question turned in, what?
Yeah, I think David, I think you were sort of alluding to this, but correct me if I'm wrong, even with this change order, um this is still comes in at less than what we would have gotten from like for the other bid with the elevator, correct?
Yes, I think it's significantly less. I don't have that in front of me, but it was.
I'm I'm actually looking at it. And so this voluntary alternate hydraulic line item under Great Lakes Elevator is ninety-seven thousand five, so assuming that's part of it. Assuming that would have been required for that bid, then yeah, it's much less.
Yeah, it was, uh, it might have been twenty, thirty thousand. I don't really remember, but it was.
Without that, I calculated it out to this fifteen thousand number really only being about seven thousand over compared with what that other bid would have been without the hydraulic thing added.
The uh, maybe the other thing to note too, um, that isn't included in here is that um we we aren't seeing the changes associated with um the the council chamber columns.
Yes.
And um Stephen and I spoke spoke earlier today, and I think that we anticipate some some deducts associated with that because of the the intensity of the work that would have been associated with with the columns.
Right, yeah, you've you've bought the material already because it's it was part of the bid from Axiom, so we can't go back on that. But it was, it was a highly intense uh level of um labor that would be required to install uh footings in the basement, install steel up through the floor, getting it in the building and uh securing it to support the severed column at that center location. Um, so Axiom is reluctant to kind of off the top of their head, that's uh Deibum McGraby, to come up with a number before he gets the hard numbers from his uh, his labor force that's gonna do the work or that was going to do the work. So i- if the uh, if the column uh issue there, that was a line on about sixteen thousand dollars, right, uh, Justin, I think?
Correct.
Yeah, um, I I'd say uh, two-thirds of that cost uh so associated with the installation of the steel that has already been purchased. At least according to to Deibum, um, would be perhaps associated with the uh deduction of labor for that, so. But I don't want to say that specifically, but you're gonna see a good portion of that coming back. So it's pretty close to, well, it's pretty close, but not not quite there to washing out the cost for this uh bulletin scope of work and and pricing.
Stephen, how much more? Stephen, how much more time do we have on actual construction work?
Well, uh, Axiom is projecting uh at some point in November at this point, but I think it's before uh Thanksgiving. But I don't want to speak for them because we've been after them to provide a revised schedule for a number of weeks. But I would say obviously their initial goal was to be done by election day. I don't think that's gonna happen. At least as it regards your uh council chamber. Uh, but I think uh, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, Thanksgiving is the latest I've heard.
That 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 was the last um.
And do we have, and do we have a substantial conclusion date that there? Due by or or anything like that relative?
Not.
Absolutely. To the extent I've been asking for weeks, uh, not quite yet, no.
Okay, and are there, there's no damages for delay? Not this one, right?
No, no. So uh, actually, I have had some uh in-depth conversation uh as recently as today and last week as to coming up with some items that we could put on the table for deduct, further deducts to continue to offset these additional costs that we've been dealing with for the last few months. Um, I don't have any direction yet. I'm trying to think out of the box to come up with things that have not been secured in terms of purchase uh, purchased and stored. Nothing has really come up um, yeah, with uh Axiom, so I'm gonna maintain that effort to try to find things that could be deleted. And of course, that would be brought to you folks, so you'd understand exactly what you might be giving up to help offset offset the costs associated with this bulletin. None are attractive and none none are, I think, um nobody would want to do that, but uh trying to find some of that might be the most uh uh painless and nobody would notice. I mean, certainly nothing that would affect life, safety and occupancy of the building. So it really comes down to switching out some finishes perhaps, but uh that may or may not help.
Okay, thank you both for attending this evening. Um, virtually forced. Are there other council questions on there? We have a motion by Fisher and a second by Rob to approve the change order.
The second, a point of information, council rules do require going forward to approve a motion or resolution.
That's my thought. I thought we had that. So that might have, I may need to come back. That's true, I didn't pull that up during, thank you for finding that there. Uh, okay, so we are on three. Motion by Fisher, second by Rob to approve the change order for fifteen thousand, five sixty-three eighty-nine. Pam, could you please call the vote?
Griffin. Yeah, Fisher, yes, Hubbard, yes.
Yes.
Michelle's and Theo.
Yes, okay, motion carries, thank you. Item M four is discussion of the uh October thirteenth public information session, preparing for that. Sure.
Yeah, um, I think that the things that were put together from the information sheet have some really good stuff on there. Um, so it's one of the things that I think that's pretty great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you asked in here, you know, we want to have half the meeting, and I think we should have this information sheet right at the door. See that language question, uh, and is it, what, last time we were worried about whether we could read it or not, we want to make sure it's legible, okay, that by non-size. Um, I assume the room's gonna be set up some one way to this? Or are you thinking that we'll have rows of chairs? I don't know, it's a guess, it's probably people will show up or not.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, you know, we can move the tables out and bring more chairs forward, so everybody's closer. Um, but my thought is that it would be set up as, you know, like this, as as a work session. But kind of a more interactive version of a work session.
But again, it's it's an informational meeting. We're not lobbying, yeah or nay or
Yeah.
positioning on that.
Do we need these tables then? It might be more information on the have, I'm I'm willing to sit close to the front or whatever, but is this necessary for that? Because it makes it like coming into leaving where we're gonna take action or not. I don't know, just a thought.
Well, I mean, you know, all over the meeting, like we've normally open any meeting where it's done on us or the other. And then the agenda that they've drafted here, you give the audience a chance to make any comments they would like to make. It's good for us to hear if there are some, and then, you know.
Well, maybe that's, if they're gonna speak, yeah, maybe that's.
It's good if we're here, obviously.
Got it, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Jamie?
Do we, no, um, I mean, I would like it if the interim chief, chief architect could be here. I would like it if there was something in architecture could be here. I imagine there will be some technical questions that would be better answered by either one of them.
Yeah, so that's actually why I invited David tonight, uh, because I I do believe he's planning on being here for the October meeting.
I am, that's correct. I'll be ready to do whatever it is you need me to do.
You know, Justin, if if you're, if you're comfortable, I thought, you know, you could go over the the information sheet that, you know, the staff put together, we've been putting out. You know, we can um you know, inter questions and field dialogue from there.
Do you express some concern about the fact that you're the clerk and your participation?
Oh, I can, I can.
So I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, so so I I mean, if if it were, you know, literally reading off of the sheet, which, you know, it it was designed to be point factual, um, you know, that that that's one thing. But if it's, you know, elaborating on designs or saying what what the pros or cons might be, then I I don't think that that can be my place as, as a clerk.
Okay. Well, if you prefer, you prefer me to go over it, I don't know, did it, Justin?
Uh, yeah, it was, whether whether it's it's members of council, you or if you wanted to have, you know, David Gasson. Kind of review the the plans, I think, you know, that that could be appropriate.
What? I'd like to stick to talking about what the. What the request is first, to make sure there's no questions on that. If we want to then move from there to. Questions from the the public on the the two options that we currently have, you know.
Just, yeah, this is what, these are the choices, not not to express a preference.
Right.
I just.
Made that that decision hasn't.
No, it has not.
Those are to show that there's more than one way to do this, and that's a future.
Yeah.
Money that's available.
And it's not about what I think, it's about what they think, and that will help me to get where I need to get.
So just to clarify, just like in one of these meetings, there's nothing that precludes an individual council member from saying what their individual preferences. The concern is if a council tries to share that the council has a preference, that's what is prohibited in terms of the. Using publicly funded resources.
So so I mean, uh, any individual council member can can state their their opinions. Um, I I think even council as as a body can state their their preference, but we can't publish materials or. Make any any announcements of, you know. Vote yea or yea or nay on this ballot proposal as as the city.
But a member of the public could say, well, Councilmember Griffin, what do you think? Or all of you at this table, what do you as individuals think? We're able to answer that question, right?
I, I, I wouldn't see why not. Because this is individual city council members are are able to have and express their their own individual opinion.
What we're putting forth though is not something we've decided, it's a potential for what could be done with the amount of money we're talking about. But to say that. No, there is a way to express your preference. Or something that isn't.
Yeah, I think the decision that the city's made, that that we as a board have made, is that we believe we need. The public's backing of eight point four million in order to implement. One of those two options to improve our fire safety.
But we don't really have the actual option, but.
We haven't gotten, no, that part of the decision hasn't been made.
Right.
But we want to make sure there's no questions about how do we get to the eight point four? What's included in the eight point four, whether it's option A or B, David and Chief Armstrong can help with those kind of questions.
Okay, good. That's a housekeeping question, this is, this is Monday.
Oh, it's your house. Um, the other thing is, would you like to see something under, you know, not our specific, something to the effect of like, public Q and A?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, following up on that, so yeah, even where it says discussion of public safety facility spot proposal, usually when we have a work session, if that's how it's conveyed, it's not including the public. I think if it if we clearly are, because otherwise it seems like it's going to be discussion amongst us, which I don't know that I have any discussion with council members. You do want it, you want it from the public, so I think either changing that or explicitly adding somewhere like including Q and A from the audience or members of the public or.
Yeah, I think I need to say under number two that that representatives from partners in architecture and the AFD will be on hand to help adjust answer questions related to. Health council will answer questions.
And do you think, I mean, I don't want to do lots of work in terms of formatting, in terms of what you have, I don't know if you have the information sheet to hand out again. Uh, if you would throw each of these little blocked, um, like rectangles up on a PowerPoint slide or something, I don't know if we have the multimedia capacity.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can bring one of the TVs over and and make sure that that's available.
Yeah.
Just so people can see it easier, okay?
Right, right, and just to like help with the flow, so people, I don't know, I just think it's helpful when you have a set of slides and people are kind of tracking along with you, where you're going.
Okay. Zach.
Yeah, so for for my job, I carry certification with the American Institute of Certified Planners. As part of that, we have to maintain a certain amount of continuing education, which means we have to go to the planning conference every year. Uh, the planning conference for Michigan is smack dab in the middle of the date that was set here, so I will not be there. Um, I could have told you the date of the conference last year, um, so that is incredibly disappointing, we'll be able to participate. Um, I do ask, I have, I don't see it in this materials, but we have been promised that we would get. A comparison of the multiple options against the facility needs assessment, how it compares with that. Are we going to have that for Thursday? Or is that not going to be available yet?
That's a question to me, Mr. Mayor. I don't have that in a state of completeness, that'll be ready by then, but we will continue to work on that.
Is there anything else that? Are you, are you going to have those, um? Images on boards?
If you would like, well, we could have large format material, definitely prepared for the meeting.
I think having some boards around would be helpful.
I think, yeah, I think that, after this conversation, particularly for people we have in one, and prefer to walk around or.
Yeah, well, you're going to get those that are comfortable, ask who had a question in public, or then at the end of the meeting, they have to come up.
That's, yeah, exactly, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that available.
Thanks, David.
And we were planning to have it, I just will buy a Zoom. So Zach, I don't know if you'd be able to attend.
Yeah, they got one.
Okay, thanks for your work on that thing, and that's actually the catch on the day.
I'm I'm sorry, this is before I forget, I just noticed this looking at tonight's agenda, I'm sorry, this is totally the wrong time to say this, but. The non-range participation says same as item G, item G is public hearings, and I think that changed when we added conflicts of interest. And I went back and that's been consistently incorrect, and nobody seems to have caught that. And I think I thought of that because I had a question for this this agenda for the work session. Do we, under non-range participation, are we limiting people to five minutes like we usually do, and if we are, should we put that on there?
Yeah, probably should. Anything else? Okay, I do this, I have M five. Discussion of, uh, general approach, chapter twenty, article two subdivision ordinance update.
Okay, so in in anticipation of this coming before you. At your next agenda for setting a public hearing. Uh, Justin and I thought it might be a good idea to have a quick little discussion and sort of primer, if you will, about. What the zoning or what the, um, subdivision ordinance update entails. It has not been formally presented to you. But it has been provided in planning commission packets. Um, so and you get those as reference, so if I'm going on about something that you're already comfortable with or understand, just stop me and let me tell me to move on. So. Um, excuse me, the subdivision ordinance sets forth the procedures and requirements for the planning of subdivisions. Um, and there's a specific state act that that sort of in in. Helps provide the rails on which you ride on, if you will, that's P A two eighty eight of nineteen sixty seven, also known as the Land Division Act. Or I'm sorry, Subdivision Control Act. Updates to our subdivision ordinance include things like street design and layout. Landscaping and property line for residential or future residential, commercial and industrial subdivisions. It, um, it also proposes reviewing options for new developments with multiple buildings on large parcels, which are, um, only likely to occur. If the city expands through annexation. So this sort of this, these updates put us in a good position. Um, we believe, and so does the planning commission, for any changes or future developments that could come into the city. So as a summary. The proposed changes have allowances for marginal access streets there, which are proposed for delineation in rear service alleys to be allowed in their place. Um, currently alleys aren't permitted. Um, one of the things that I'll I'll bring up is our subdivision ordinance, um, that is being proposed really. Reflects the way the town was originally platted. And although there, it does not prohibit, um, subdivision design. Uh, like we've seen in West Ridge and here on Farms and the newer subdivisions, the, um, the goal was to. Get back to the roots, if you, if you will. Um, half streets are proposed to be prohibited, but it does allow the the proposed ordinance would allow planning commission to determine if a half street would be reasonable. Uh, cul-de-sacs are proposed to be avoided, not prohibited, um, and the maximum strength, street length would be reduced to two hundred feet. Uh, the right-of-way width would go back to looking, um, uh, like our our road rights of way in the old village, ninety nine feet. There'd be an allowance for city, uh, for the city engineer to require mid-block pedestrian crossings. Uh, requirement for sidewalks on both sides of the street except in industrial parks. Minimum lot width and size for, uh, for lots in business or commercial plats would be proposed to be reduced to fifty feet. Uh, in width and twenty one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet in area. Minimum block lengths and perimeters are proposed for residential plats to be based on the future land use of the area. The lengths and perimeters for those areas planned for village residential, multiple family residential, the Baker Road corridor and village commercial. Or similar are smaller than others and based on the patterns in the current village, uh, plan. And those those additions to the the village that came immediately after, not necessarily our newer subdivisions, not that far. In, uh, uh, in recent time. Um, if a plat, I'm sorry, if a plat of butts or is located within five hundred feet of a public trail, there'd be a requirement for a direct link from the proposed subdivision. The regulations for cluster developments are proposed to be taken out of the subdivision ordinance, put into the zoning ordinance, and then they'd be referenced. No reason to have two sets. For commercial and industrial developments, parking and landscape regulations are proposed for deletion as well. They'd be again replaced with cross-section or cross-references in the zoning ordinance. And then for industrial developments, we've added a provision for bicycle traffic by multi-use paths or bicycle lanes. Um, you were provided with a, it's a blue line, um, markup of the subdivision ordinance. Again, all of this is in anticipation of of us coming to you next, uh, at your next meeting and asking you to set a public hearing. Do you have any questions or comments that, um, I could address?
I have a more general one, so under purposes where it says promote development patterns and support the creation of complete neighborhoods. Uh, with a mix of housing, civic retail and service choices within a compact, walkable environment. I've just heard residents say at one point, oh, all the housing options Dexter has, but the one thing we don't have are like one acre estate lots. Um, or a subdivision, something like that, you could move out to the townships if you want a half acre, one acre type thing.
Yes.
Curious, I mean, that's a decision that's being made here that we're saying we want annexed property, we're wanting this to be compact and walkable, small lots.
Correct.
Is there a reason for that? Just that the aesthetic people have indicated a preference for?
Um, it reflects the urban nature of the village, um, excuse me, we weren't plotted with, uh, one acre or more lots. Um, we have public services, water, sewer to service, and so the need for having large, um. Large lots is not the same as it is in a township. And there's, there is plenty of, um, large lots available in townships, um, if somebody wanted to live that way. It defeats the purpose of having, I'm sorry, go ahead, Zach.
Just to be clear, so we're not looking for that type of housing diversity.
Correct.
I'm just going to add that from the fiscal standpoint, there's been a lot more research in the past five to ten years in the planning world that. For most of development, residential development, you need somewhere between six and ten units per acre in order for the balance, the math to check out. So that you're collecting equal or more than you're paying for services for it. So if you get a density of one unit per acre, your cost by the sidewalk and the road and the water and the sewer, you're losing money for that. In in general, in the brush.
Michelle, in your summary, you you have a comment that says. The maximum length of a street. Shall be two hundred feet, I think I read, or maximum length of the reduced.
Is that part of the alley thing?
I don't know that I understand that.
So between, so a road length before you have, um, an intersecting street, so think of it as block lengths. Um, it it. They'd be reduced to two hundred feet, I believe currently. Um, I want to say eight hundred feet, but I could be wrong. There was a, again, to make the compact.
So in the, in the old village, excuse me, in the old village. Where there's a lot of ninety nine by ninety nine foot lots or hundred by hundred for lots, that's basically two lots wide and. Before you have to have an intersecting street, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if I remember correctly, Sean. But remember, in our ordinance, we're also allowing smaller lots. With our proposed zoning ordinance. There are in, um, in the V R one and V R two, um, the lots are allowed to be forty nine feet wide. With a.
I think that number should be revisited.
Okay, the the block length, you mean, or the street length?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was, that was in West Ridge or here on Farms or Dexter Crossing. Sixty foot frontage, every three houses you'd have a street.
Correct, and I don't disagree with you, um, um.
Frequent. Why would we want that many streets? It's much more economical to put homes there.
It, remember, this is looking at, um, a smaller lot width, forty nine and a half feet. Um, in a smaller lot area, so you'd be able to get more. You'd be able to get more lots on. A two hundred foot. Length street, then you, it wouldn't be, it's not, it's not designed to be a a west ridge. But I will, we can go back and we can look at this.
I just asked him to make sure I understood it, that doesn't make much sense to me, but. What what, um. The minimum lot width and size for business or commercial is proposed to reduce to fifty feet, what is it now?
I believe if I remember right, it's two hundred, so a number of our lots like on Baker Road, for example, are non-conforming.
Right, okay.
So it's designed to to bring more conformity in and, um, to find a way to utilize and redevelop existing parcels. I'm sorry. Let me start state that differently, because I'm, that would be the zoning ordinance. This is looking to create something. This is looking to create something similar to what we see in our, in our old village area, not not create a suburban design pattern.
Okay, I'm just trying to do the math.
It would be a 50-foot wide lot.
Why, if it seemed to be by doing the math right, Zach, 400 feet long? The 400.
Yes, that would be.
And that seems like.
Yeah, so, so, so seriously, I think the 200 feet was referencing cul-de-sacs. So I'm looking at section 20.36, it references block length, and it has a minimum block length of 400 feet and a maximum of 800. So that's saying you shouldn't have streets every 200 feet.
Okay, that's, that's what I was saying, right? Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it applies to the cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
Is it 21.36?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Zach.
So I'm, I'm going to try to be quick about this. My apologies, I can't be sure. So does this apply, is this intended to also apply to site condominiums or to just subdivisions?
I believe if I remember correctly, Zach, we have a site condominium section that we added to the ordinance a few years back when we updated. No, I take that back. We've added the site condominium standards to this zoning ordinance update. So no, this would not apply, the site condominium would.
Well, this is a really nerdy thing for folks. So subdivisions, that's the old school way of splitting up property. We're never going to see that again, ever, because the process is two owners to go through all review approvals at the state and the county, no one will ever do that again. There's a lot of really good stuff in here, so I would be supportive of saying that this is subdivision and site condominiums. You get the same product, so West Ridge is a site condominium, Dexter Crossing is a site condominium, right to here on Farms or something. So that'd be my first thing is, I would like to see this because there's a lot of good stuff in here towards it. Another blanket thing, since we're giving this a really heavy shakedown, there are lots of spots where the language is unnecessarily complex. So for example, there's a spot where it says the intersection shall be not less than 400 feet from something. While we're looking at this, we might as well change it to shall be at least 400 feet. It's a little easier, people can look it up and it makes a bit more sense. Let's see. Some little nerdy stuff, I would be supportive of requiring pre-application meetings, not optional. You get a lot of better product out of the day if you say you're going to have to come in and meet because well, this is the experience, it's been really, really good in places where I've seen that. So I told you it's going to go fast in here. I'm trying, I'm trying, I got a lot of notes in here in pink pen. For, for alleys, just a clarification question for later, is the 26 feet intended to be the right-of-way of the paved surface?
It would be the right-of-way, Zach.
Okay, that's good, because 26 feet wide for an alley is pretty wide. For a street standards and specifications, I, I still think the radii are really too big and encourages higher speed traffic. Those are really big radii for residential areas that aren't consistent with the, the village streets now. Same thing for the street standards, the, the road commission wants really wide roads that are consistent with areas where people drive more slowly, so I'd be interested in looking at that. Let's see, for pedestrian ways, I would love to see something hardwired in there that says if your block is longer than this, you shall put in a mid-block crossing with some backup language I'm going to do a little bit later.
So there is that bullet point about the city engineer, you want us to tighten that up a little bit?
I, I would prefer to see it's something that they do, and then if they don't want to do it, they request the modification for. I feel it's a lot easier to kind of plant your things on the things that are important and walk back from that and then to try to ask someone to do something. For cluster developments, 2040, it'd be good to include some language for planning unit developments because cluster developments, again, are very, very rare or open space preservation, as the state calls them, PUDs are much, much more common, so I'd like to cover that base too. In the spots where it references specific standards for lot width, I, yeah, I prefer to just reference whatever the zoning ordinance says and let it float with that. For restrictive covenants, a couple of things that I've been seeing pop up a bit more is, I would like to see something in there that, that basically says you can't prohibit accessory dwellings. So that's kind of a challenge in a lot of the, these site condominiums or plats where they say you shall only have a single-family house. Zoning ordinance may allow you to have an accessory dwelling in the garage and the basement or whatever. So I'd like to see that option extended to other places. One thing I didn't see in here was specifications that make sure that the extension between the sidewalk and the road is wide enough to plant an actual tree, like an actual street tree. So more than three feet, so the maple tree is more than 50 years old, it's got a place to be, like to have that in there. One other little nerdy detail, I'd like to have some reference to development agreements. It's kind of alluded to in performance guarantee, but that's a nice way to wrap up a lot of details. And again, a very nerdy persnickety thing is instead of variances at the end, again, this is a style thing, I would prefer to see it called administrative adjustments or modifications because variances are a very specific term of art. And if we crosswire it, it can be weird and confusing, so these are basically modifications. One other finding I'd like to see in there is that the modification is consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Okay, I am done, if I'm not done, I'm not going to say anything else.
Thank you.
So this is what we have to do, guys.
Are there any other comments or questions?
If it's still on for the 24th, we'll consider saying, oh, yeah, maybe shoot it for a little time for some of that.
I think we'll, I think we'll do our best.
Yeah, good, it's okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, moving on to M6, discussion of process for appealing legal counsel.
So I am just looking for clarification to move forward on the topic we talked about last time. I was interested in getting the input from our legal counsel, and I don't think that's happened yet. So I just am trying to figure out, is there a formal process? If so, what is it? If not, what are means by which a council member could request legal input? I've included a consideration item following, thinking maybe the way to do it is you have to make a motion and get a second and counsel has to vote on it. But if there's some other way, I appreciate knowing that.
So with regard to what we talked about last meeting, I took the portion that was in the packet related to the charter section 505, I think it was, or whatever it was. The council would have to make a motion to ask the attorney to do that, so I read. Last night, I didn't know my spouse here, just that I had a common sale on, which was an agreement, I actually talked to Scott prior to the meeting, asked if any of the changes had been.
So if counsel emails Justin, whoever the city manager is, and says, I'm interested in getting some more information on this, could you consult, legal counsel? Does he need to bring that item to council so we can take the vote, or is there some point where he uses discretion? And in this case, was discretion just not used, or was he waiting, or are we required to?
Well, I think because the, the charter mentioned that the council should be the judge of the of the grounds for security, we would have to direct that initiative.
So that, that, that was my reading of it. And if something is, we'll call it sensitive, then it would be my preference that counsel gives the direction to me to engage Scott.
I mean, most of the time, he has, with Joe, most of the time, he has the ability to communicate with the attorney on anything he feels he needs to us. As long as he's not spending more than five grand to do it. If it's something that's going to cost much more to investigate and he feels that's important, then he would bring that item to us for approval.
I, I wouldn't say it could be valued not just for this council, but future councils to establish some sort of guidelines instead of just the gut feeling. And I mention that because, or I, I'm thinking that because we don't want to have any single council member just tripping up and generating billables. It's a, it's a real quick and easy way to run that fund down. At the same time, a lot of good can come out of, if one or two council members have a really serious question of, of having that, I don't know what the balancing is, I don't know what other communities have. It'd be a, a nice thing for council to reach or staff to reach out to these other places and say, what's your threshold, what's your process? I know everyone's different. And that, that way at least folks have an expectation of, of what's going on, and you know that there's a way to reach it. I don't know, maybe two council members need to ask for something or up this or that, I don't know. But I think it'd be useful then to have some sort of a process or direction before a sensitive issue comes up.
Oftentimes, we do a motion where we say, you know, we'll prove this and have staff run something by legal counsel. That's us giving direction in that case, right? It's pretty clear there, there's almost understanding there. I think if, if one person or two people want to get an opinion on something, I personally think that should come here, but we should just vote to do it. But we're not, the council doesn't think it's necessary, but you know, that would be the most clear way to do it. And I, here's what I don't think we want. I don't think we want to have to have the city attorney attend every meeting.
Right.
Okay, all the time that we're paying is the regular course of action, that's completely unnecessary to me. Most of the time, if we've got something we think needs a legal look, not to be able to instruct the city manager to be able to go and do that.
I think, I think requiring counsel for every time the attorney states is a pretty high bar. Like, we're preparing a resolution, there may be some technical language.
Well, that's only if it's initiated here. I mean, how often has it? That's all I'm saying. If it's initiated here, we ought to be we ought to be approving the action in the body. I mean, most of the stuff that comes through for us is not initiated here, it's initiated by the staff that we hired to run the town or whatever.
Well, then I guess that's my question, because Justin, can you, I mean, I don't want to do, put something in place that has, you know, little unintended consequences. Would it trip you up in your day-to-day work if we were to say it has to come here every time you want to talk to it?
No, 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 that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if it's a question we have, it should.
No, no, but I think I was going off of what he was saying. I wasn't necessarily responding to what you were saying just now. Because I agree with that, if it's something that we are initiating and we vote on it and say, yeah, go talk to Scott about this, I mean, that's fine.
Well, right, but or if, if he just has a question on his own, as long as it's under 5,000, he can go do it without our, that's already in the policy, he has the right to talk to.
Okay, so as long as we're not messing with that.
Because we've approved two of our councilors. Our role early on, we do our all the different firms and such, we give him the tools to go to and he, we're not going to get in the way of any day-to-day action that he would be through that. It's just if he got into something that was over the 5,000, then he'd have to come to us.
And, and I mean, if, if it's something innocuous, then I mean, I, I have no issue reaching out to Scott and getting his, his feedback, but again, in, in my discretion, if it's something that I think is sensitive, then I would come to council and ask for that. So that direction, what I've heard is that there are some cases where you feel comfortable, whenever a council said, hey, can you check with this with counsel? You would go do it, assuming it's under 5,000. There are cases where you might not be comfortable doing that. Is that fair to Marie? I don't like putting that on the staff to have to try and figure this out.
Right, and relative to the one that, that we were, the example that we were just living with last week or two weeks ago, to me, it's pretty clear in section 505, if we're going to do anything, council has to take action to, to investigate or.
Yeah, I, I switch it more carefully.
Yeah.
You could have a council, and I was in office when there was one. And it was sort of carved up inside, and then to have one side door to the attorney for something without checking it with anybody else, or vice versa. That does not promote working together on the council, it just doesn't. There's got to be some kind of a way to keep us all informed and working as a team. I don't know how it could possibly hurt to have it go through mayor, city manager, I, I don't see what the downside to that is.
Yeah, I just want to clarify with regard to five, section 505, I mean, the information I'm looking in, we'll get into that on the next item, the information I'm looking to get clarity on isn't is background information to determine whether and what, if and when section 5 was likely to come to work. So it's a piece of background information, it isn't that I'm prepared to take action as in, you know, described in 505. But then I'm trying to gather background data to inform this, so I just want to clarify that, I guess, that I wasn't looking to make a motion regarding 505 at the last meeting. I was looking to get clarification to determine, to better understand what it means to be eligible. I mean, it's fine, I mean, I am happy moving forward to make a motion every time I want to get input from legal counsel. I just need to know that that's what I need to do.
I think that makes the most sense.
And as long as everybody has the same understanding and we all know that that's what we're doing.
Go ahead, Ryan.
There's a question about what, what the $5,000 threshold is, like, how many? No, 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 that, that's not what I mean. Like, what, how much time is that?
Yeah, so whatever, whatever 5,000 divided by.
75, 180, is that? Or 200, I mean, it's roughly 25 hours.
Yeah, it's, it's about 23 hours. Which, I mean, in Scott's world is substantial.
I guess I just saw others. I mean, let's say, for example, this next item, would that take more than 25 hours of Scott's time?
Well, we do have the ability to ask them for an estimate if we're concerned.
I guess I'm just saying, like, I don't think anything, like, if I called Justin tomorrow and said, hey, ask Scott something, you know, like, it's not necessarily going to be a question that's more than 25 hours. Right?
Right, but we're supposed to be not just calling up and using the attorney as a whim to answer the question.
I'm just.
I know, nobody's, nobody is, that's why, I mean, it's all been done here, asking a question. So if it's done, if the question's raised here, and everybody, there's full support for it to be a legitimate question or think it's important to answer, or we all agree it's something that needs clarifying.
Yeah, I'm kind of with that.
I think then we just direct the city manager to do it.
Yes, yeah, so thinking back, with the exception of the conflict of interest ordinance, which I know Scott was very involved in, I cannot think back to a time when I have asked of my own accord, input from legal counsel. I think it's always been in the context of a topic we're talking about at a meeting, so I don't, I mean, I don't foresee my.
In the history that I can think of, very few times anybody's asked.
I don't have a problem bringing it to counsel.
We could clarify that in the next rules if you want, it's all we want to. So as if everyone understands that, that's all going. You're okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about again. When we see the.
Yeah, sure. And that's where you put it, right, to see down here. Okay, okay, move on to seven. Okay, so I'm saying is consideration of council member eligibility in general.
Right, yeah, so it's not consideration. So I guess I will I have provided a sample motion. So I guess it's a motion to direct legal counsel to best provide clarity on council member eligibility, including uh, the necessary insufficient conditions for maintaining eligibility on council.
Is it, is it what's written there on page? One twenty-seven, Jamie?
Eight, I think it's one thirty-seven.
Oh, there you are. Sorry, one thirty-seven, yeah.
So, yeah, direct staff has to get input from city attorney regarding the necessary insufficient conditions for maintaining eligibility for council, including whether maintaining a principal residence exemption in the city is a sufficient condition.
One second for discussion. Right here for a second. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're right a little more background. So
Sure.
I guess why it's unclear to me is they had this here. So in the charter under five oh one, any candidate for elected office must be a registered voter in the city for a minimum of one year prior to the date of the election. So it's talking about being a registered voter for a minimum of one year prior to the election.
Here in the city charter?
Right.
This is a little better, right?
Right. If you take a look at the Michigan voter registration application to register to vote in Michigan, you must be a Michigan resident at the time you register and a resident in your city or township for at least thirty days, a US citizen, at least eighteen years of age, and not currently serving in detention jail or prison. Doesn't say anything about prin- principal residence exemption. Talks about being a Michigan resident. If you go to income tax act of nineteen sixty-seven from the MCL, resident there is defined as you know, the an individual down the south of the state talks about where a person has his true fixed permanent home, a principal establishment, um, to which whenever absent there from, he intends to return. I don't see any mention of principal residence exemption there. Uh, in another place in Michigan election law, it says residence is used in this act means that place at which a person individually sleeps, keeps his or her personal effects, and has a regular place of lodging.
Well, that's similar.
Right. So I think, and certainly, I mean, in other places I've read things about people having the constitution more right to travel. I guess my question is taking this, taking a hypothetical example to the extreme, could somebody be registered to vote in the city? Travel throughout the state, throughout the country, come back for meetings? Have they, do they maintain their eligibility? Maybe there's a question of whether or not a resident wants that of their elected official, but have they violated the law in any way? It's not clear to me. And it seems to me it's potentially a straightforward question to answer, but I see lots of different words, different definitions. And I don't know that it's as straightforward as principal residence exemption. That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, exactly. Yeah, so I forget if I mentioned this or not last time, but if you look at the the Voting Act, it specifically references case law, which is really bonkers when it specifically says, go see case law. That means there's been a whole bunch of case, like every election, there's at the state level, it's popped up somewhere. So I think it is is worthwhile for us to get direction. I would prefer that we allow a bit of cooling off period and and not request or or not reexamine this until like December. Um, they said the case law is probably weird and tangled on this. Um, I do like to have predictability. Every zoning ordinance I've written has language for the least common cases, but usually the most heated so that at least you can look at something and point to it. So I think it's worth exploring, um, and getting some clarity so that that folks have understanding. That's a, I'd like to use the term moral turpitude. It's just a fun word. Yeah. I like weird words, though.
Well.
I do agree that I don't, I'm not necessarily against looking at this, but I don't think right now is the right time to do it. I think we also, I I agree, we need a little bit of a a pause.
May I ask, can you wait? Do you consider a pause on January?
I think definitely after the election.
Would you accept it from me, man, to clarify and get this back in January?
I don't understand.
Well.
The truth is, it's the truth whether we find it out now or sometime later.
The reason why initially pause is that um, in my work, people are often voting on motions when they come in, because I have to tell them they can't put a shed somewhere. For example, where they have to get rid of one of their three dogs or or whatever. And I found that in that initial state, there is nothing I can do to help. All I can do is sit there and and take it. It takes a while to get to the point where you can have a productive discussion, and I prefer to take the time to make sure that there can be a productive discussion so we can get results. I fear that it's too quickly. The the field won't be thrilled for that. Most needs to grow.
If it, if the vote won't pass because you guys won't approve it unless it's delayed, I'll accept it. But I will say that we are here to conduct city business on behalf of how many thousands of residents and registered voters. And this is a matter of city business. This is not personal. It's business.
Yeah, so just to jump in here with my own thoughts on some things, I don't think this is that unclear. I know, you know, our our charter, our charter says a few words about stuff. The reason it says a few words is it doesn't replicate what is said by the state throughout there. We don't need to rephrase something that's already in the other laws. Now, I think the answer to the question, can you, can you live in the city? Get elected to council? Travel for business pleasure, whatever, come back, make the meetings. If that's, if that's the lifestyle while you're elected, I don't think that includes you for being on on council. I think that that one of the things that is and I do think that principal residence exemption exactly means that you're a resident. I I think it's implied in the title of that. More than implied. Principal residence exemption. And that's what I mean, where one resides. I I don't, I don't, um, I think that the denominator, I said this last meeting, and I don't know if it's important or not, but I don't think you can just jump in and try to look at something in a micro category of of somebody's lifetime of where they've been. And part of this, we just got to meet Kevin, what's it? From across the street, who's got to meet him today? You know, they've lived together, they've lived next to each other, across the street from each other. I don't even know how many years.
About six.
Six, okay.
About six, I guess.
Okay, and you know, so maybe he noticed some change in the habit, okay, or a change in in something. But I don't know that that necessarily I don't, I don't read anything and anything that you've read there that would point to they're not a resident. It it was, and regardless of who it is, I mean, if it and and I do, I do think that Zach's comment about in in laws agreement that doing this a little later down the road is was probably good because it lets someone that just sink in and allows us to normalize it a little bit, a little later, if that's worthwhile. But I mean, if if this, if if we had heard from Scott last meeting, I would have voted no, because I don't think, or if the motion was to go ask Scott for the thing, I would have voted no, because I don't think this is that unclear. I mean, I mean, if if the, you know, if if I can, just to point it down for one per second about the example, you know, the goal wasn't to prove that she's a vagabond. Well, it sounds, well, well, I I I don't want, I mean, I mean, i- if 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 she, if she doesn't live where she lives, the the opposite way of proving that she's not living there is to prove she lives somewhere else.
Go for it then.
And I I don't, I don't know that any of the things that we've read are would 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 prove that. I mean, wow.
You know, I think part of my, I'm okay with looking inward, as I tend to review, and I would hope, I mean, I don't know, we'll get a different answer, we get a different answer, but I do agree that I think it's pretty clear. And in the case that you put forward, you know, if somebody wants to live their life, like traveling for work, traveling for pleasure, coming, being here for meetings and, you know, having their residence here. Okay, well, then, if if you don't think they're doing their jobs in elected official, there are other mechanisms in place you could recall.
Well, yeah, if they're not doing their job as an elected official, then people won't vote for them the next time they're up for election.
That too, or you can recall.
Yeah, I mean, if if, yeah, that would be an extreme too.
But I'm just saying, it's there, it's not.
I suppose, yeah. Yes.
So regarding the delay, the motion would be direct to the city attorney effective January, I forget, one twenty-three.
Yeah.
I manage to stop that.
Sure.
Um, I don't know what, who's kept, took Kevin's switch. I'm not sure about that. Um, but I do wanna make it clear that he does not know my grabs. He does not tell me, so I employ somebody to take care of that. When he first came here, he was super friendly, almost to the point that I was sort of uncomfortable because he would just show up and mow grass. And it took me a while to figure out Kevin that to get comfortable with that. But he hasn't done any of that stuff for me for a very long time. And to say that he thinks that the house was, quote, abandoned. My daughter's in and out of there all the time. I'm in and out of there all the time. It just seems like it was less than genuine what the motive was, and that is really stuck with me. Um, and the way that it was handled could have been so much better, done so much better, if there was some fact finding and some things taken care of and not relying on somebody who told me this, and they have a good reason to know your coming and goings. I mean, I felt stalled. And when I was home last week, I thought, I wonder if I should be going and getting somebody to sign a book so that they'll know that I was here. Um, what has been portrayed is not, is not accurate, and that is the problem that I've had with this. And I'm smart enough to know that I have not been able to be here as much as I would like to be here. And when my mom dies, that'll change things. So I did not take out a petition to run. There you have it. And you couldn't wait. Two meetings, three meetings, or whatever, and hammer this up. We've had to do it for my benefit. But like I said, I've seen it done once before, and it's painful, stammering painful.
So you guys have a motion. Uh, I wasn't sure, did you, did you try to change the motions at all?
Me?
No.
Oh, no, thanks.
Um, did you change the exact?
I don't care.
Original motion to.
They demanded it to stay effective January second, twenty twenty-three.
You wanna just do that in January?
I don't care. I really don't. Just, nothing's gonna. No, I mean, we'll have to talk about it again, because people don't like talking about it.
Um, I think to make one more point. Um, before I fell down, um, did anybody track my comings and goings then? Did you hear anything about me then? Because I have family, very young grandchildren, and I went lots of times last night, Thursday night, and I wouldn't get in till afternoon on Sunday or Monday morning. And nobody cared about that for years. My grandson's eleven now. Nobody paid any attention to that. But when I fell down and somebody thought I was recuperating someplace, which was not accurate. For a time, when COVID was in, you all weren't being either. I was in rehab place. So I don't get what the flip was here, but I I I don't care when you talk about it. I really don't. It's it's a subject that somebody thinks you have to deal with, deal with it, just get it over with.
I would appreciate knowing how much we're gonna spend on this.
Yeah, no kidding.
Before I go forward.
So you want a motion to seek a proposal?
Do you feel you could ask Scott for an estimate? How much time did it spend on Jamie's question? Yeah. I'm still letting him do that and bring that back, and then you can, you can still make the motion in another meeting.
Don't you form a withdrawal motion?
Why don't we, how about this? Why don't we just postpone this to the next meeting? To allow, to allow him to bring back yesterday's meeting cost.
Okay, I'm gonna postpone the topic of seeking legal counsel on council member eligibility until October twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Pending information from staff.
Well, pending the, yeah, practice my costume.
Right.
And then it'll automatically be on the next meeting. As as an old business, I am, it'll be on the next meeting.
I do wanna clarify. Council member Fisher, I heard you. I did my best to not bring up your, your situation during this meeting. For members of public, anybody else here? Fact finding, to me, does include getting definitions of words. That's what I'm looking for.
Well, I think you should put a list together of words you want to find.
I am. It's that topic, council member eligibility. That includes a variety of words, registered voter, residence.
And case law. Yeah, you can, okay.
I mean, if it does straightforward, it's a pick. I wouldn't expect it to take that much time. But we need a second for the motion to postpone, I guess.
Second. Okay, so motion by Griffin, second by Michelle, to postpone this until October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. While I've got some chance to talk, get estimate. Or attorney to resolve the issue. Any discussion? Okay, Miss Pam, please call the vote to approve the postponement.
Griffin? Yes. Fisher? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. You?
Yes. It is postponed. Okay, council comments.
Before we go on, um, if I may, the second street only received three affirmative votes and required four, no pay. If you want, using Robert's award, one of the makers of the presiding of the three, you could ask, you consider it now. Yeah, I didn't want this to slip through. I'm I'm probably not gonna change my vote unless it's reduced to the things that we did, but I just wanna make sure things slip through.
Um, do we have this meeting and the next one to reconsider? Is that true?
It's it's usually the, at that meeting and the next meeting, yeah.
So read back, who voted for on item M two? So, yeah, four was Griffin, Fisher, Kiel.
So one of us has to bring it back. No, I guess we don't.
Yes, one of the two of you will need to make a motion.
We need to make a motion tonight to bring it back.
If we consider it for an hour or for next, we'll consider it next week. Yeah, which is probably the right thing to do because we might have, we might have one more person next meeting also.
I'll make a
Please.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the Second Street water main replacement and sidewalk installation project final balancing change order for the amount actually be ninety seven thousand three hundred ninety four dollars.
Same thing.
At, at the October 24th.
Oh, I'm sorry, at the October 24th.
No, no, it's okay, we're doing this together. I think we stopped the vote on the motion. We do, yeah. That's the intent though. That's the next week, yeah. Any special needs? Yeah, did you get that okay? I, I.
Not exactly at all.
Okay. Okay, okay. If we need to pause a second again. Okay, so please call the vote to approve that in reconsideration over the next meeting.
Fisher? Yes. Griffin?
Yeah.
Hubbard, yes.
Yes.
Kiel?
Yes. Okay, so thank you Zach for that suggestion. Motion carries. Okay, go to council comments. Let's try to find if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm just glad about the council consideration of the crosswalk, obviously we talked about it all the way around and.
What?
Well, I guess I'd just like to say it was nice to see so many members of public hearing today and to hear from people about various items. That was, I hope that continues.
Yeah, if you think I sounded grumpy, I apologize. But, and I'm over it now, I'm moving to a different area and I, I will not be grumpy next meeting, I promise.
Zach? I can't promise I won't be grumpy, but I try. Get a dose of the mini size. The only comment I have today is that I share this with our market manager, she's doing a very good job. A lot of vendors there, even this weekend where there's a lot of the, the products aren't available anymore, that pleased the show with vendors, that's fantastic to see. Okay, we're back around and on range. Yes, sir.
By the council rules, do say it's minimal for votes, the charter says, resolution is an official city council action in the form of a motion adopted by a majority vote of the council members present. So I don't know, the council rules can supersede the charter, but the charter does say that majority present does. I think you should probably also tease that, you did mention it was going to be here tonight.
Oh, yeah.
The study, the council member, Michelle's referenced about the payback of the houses. Being six to ten per acre. I read through that study. It included the cost of schools, but we don't, in the community, we don't include schools in our local taxes. Those are dick schools out, it's a much lower level. Makes it totally different for developments. Also, councilman Michelle's mentioned about the ADUs in the ordinance. Agree a hundred percent, in fact, I wouldn't even go further and say and ask if there's any way that the city can supersede the bylaws that are in place so that those can be allowed by people, even though the bylaws were specific, particular to you, might prohibit them. Um, on the the lawyer questions, the other thing about why it's a good idea to have a vote at council, one in situations that are difficult or sensitive, it can put Justin in a bad spot. And while he's not a political person, the city manager can be put in a politically difficult position based on requests they get. And the other reason is if the majority council doesn't want to do it, then you it doesn't get voted yes, then you don't worry about spending resources on. On eligibility, I think the other thing to note that is in the charter is it says city council and the judge of the qualification for its management. It doesn't say to look at the income tax law or the residency law for the state or even P R E, it says council side. So again, if there's a concern, it should be brought forward, brought up for a row. If it doesn't get enough votes, it doesn't go forward, and if it does, then the council can say this is what they think eligibility is. The last thing is on the discussion about the three to two also. For the reconsideration. I think the prevailing side was since the motion didn't pass, if it's three to two, if you go by the council rules. It's not the three that wants to make the motion, it's somebody with the two that has to make.
I think you're right.
Yeah, so it'd be Zach or Rod would have to make the motion. And, oh, last thing, so the speed limit on Dexter and River Road reduced from, or reduced from fifty to forty at Danoy Road going forward. And I believe some of the rationale was that changed from thirty five to fifty, a fifteen mile per hour jump was significant. And that it wasn't safe. I would say that the distance between Danoy Road and the second entrance to Dexter Crossing, it's got to be close to a quarter of a mile. There's a lot of sight lines there to be able to see that. However, you go to Westridge. Speed limit's thirty miles an hour before you go under the bridge. It goes to forty five miles an hour at the entrance to Westridge. There's only about a hundred and fifty feet of sight there, you literally cannot see the cars coming out, coming uphill. And I guarantee you, they're going forty five, forty, forty five mile an hour speed limit, be good place to sign there. The other place is coming in the town from the north, coming down off a mass, the speed limit is fairly high. I don't know how it rings down there, because I don't work it every day. Another.
Thank you for your comments. So I was, I didn't get a chance to find this by the turn, but if it, if it does say that, the charter does say that the majority will carry us the question, and we won't even need the reconsider that. I understand, I will agree that, and make sure we get it reported and. Okay. No other non-arranged?
We do have a handout line as well.
Oh, we do, great, then, who is it? Oh, Mr. Carter, assume.
Oh, there he is.
Welcome.
Thanks, Sean. Based on tonight's packet and a comment from staff at the rescheduled planning commission public hearing on ten three. I believe that the only portion of the zoning ordinance update that will include a public hearing before council will be the new subdivision language. This surprises me, given that this is a substantial revision to a document that runs north of five hundred pages. I hope I'm wrong about this. I'm unclear if council will have additional chances to hear oral comments prior to action on the revised ordinance. Aside from the subdivision portion. Prior to your regular November meeting, except for the generic public comment period then. I believe different constraints apply to the hearing and general comment period. In addition, I note that the deadline for requesting pre-arranged participation comes before packets are normally publicly available. Which makes gauging pre-arranged comment dependent on my cracked crystal ball. I suspect you already know that a foundational change promoted in the proposed revision to the zoning ordinance is a switch from conventional zoning to so-called form-based zoning code. My understanding of form-based coding is that it is a specific strategy for city governments to pursue smart growth, capital S, capital G. A planning approach designed to include long-term sustainability over short-term expediency. Form-based zoning offers reductions in bureaucratic oversight. Thus, time and dollar savings to property owners in exchange for legally binding smart growth provisions. In over five hundred pages of the ten three commission advance packet and the associated staff statements. And in the commission action this past week, I don't recall seeing any references at all to smart growth or sustainability. Or overarching or driving goals for the revision that are consistent with my understanding of form-based zoning code. Staff comment and council questions tonight are very similar. Most of the questions I heard tonight, including on strength length, street, street length, lot size, sidewalk spacing, P U Ds and cluster developments. To me must fall under the smart growth goals and strategies. Or your action is ill-informed, at least, or worse, it's hypocritical and counterproductive. I'm less clear on related language for land use that emphasizes walkability and bike-friendly streets. And reducing our carbon footprint to target climate change. Some of you know that I'm a former federal EPA senior policy advisor on climate, not just a former teacher here. So none of these elements is trivial. On the other hand, there are multiple references to making non-conforming properties into conforming parcels through the new zoning classifications and/or the new zoning map. This zoning revision should not wave a magic wand to reduce zoning non-compliance in the old footprint of the city. Particularly when there is not even lip service to what kinds of sustainability benefits accrued to the benefits, accrued to the citizens in the existing city prior to any future subdivisions or annexations. I have additional concerns relating to the commission's proposed Second Street quarter study. Particularly given that I believe affected residents and properties. Excuse me. This is particularly important, given that the former Adair property appears to have changed hands on or about six, six this year. I and others have been commenting on the impacts of Adair, its non-conformities and the importance of the adjoining properties, including a city park for a couple of years now. We apparently now have a new owner and a new one-year delay for a quarter study, subject to budget. I cannot address those concerns adequately tonight because of time. I do want to thank Michelle for stating her intent to forward my September commission public hearing statement on the August version of the proposed zoning ordinance to council. I'm unclear if that omission referred to including it in tonight's packet as my September third statement, which is what she was talking about. Was apparently also on an unintentional omission from the planning commission packet for the public hearing last week, so I'm over two on that. That statement is loaded with proving errors, which as a retired Dexter teacher is particularly cringe-worthy. Chat, if you're still in the meeting, please don't rat me out to bev. When members review those comments, which are now five weeks old, please know, and I wrote them typing on my phone in the passenger seat. Driving across the Prairie provinces of Canada with associated texting, email and voice connectivity fails. Landing in a town site without power due to a fire. So it was a little weird. And it's not very good, it's not up to my standards. I apologize for that, please keep it in mind. And things have changed in five weeks, I would like an opportunity to address some of that. Thanks for listening to me.
Thanks for your comments and thanks for sticking with us as long.
Yep. You got it.
Gosh, is there anybody else raising a hand online?
I have no other inquiries.
Okay. That concludes the non-arranged participation portion, then. Is there a motion for a German? Move by Fisher? Second by Albert, all those in favor, say the brothers a night, please. As opposed. Have a good night, have a good couple of weeks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.